I'd like to call the City Council Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency Housing Authority regular meeting to order, and we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance led tonight by the Rotary Club in the form of Mr. Steve Carlson.
Thank you, sir. The Pledge of Allegiance is to define the United States of America and a true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Steve. Next item is changes to the order of the agenda. Anything suggested by staff or the dais?
Nothing from staff this evening, Mr. Chair.
Anybody, everyone on the dais okay with the agenda as written? Sequencing? Good. We'll move on from that. Report from closed session. Greg.
There are no reportable actions from the closed session earlier tonight.
Thank you, Greg. And thank you, Crystal, for the food. It was very nice. So, item five, presentations. We have several really interesting presentations tonight. We're going to start by having Steve come back up and talk to us about the San Carlos Rotary Club. So, there you go.
Thank you, everyone, for having us tonight. Pleased to be here. I've had the pleasure of serving as the president of the San Carlos Rotary Club since last July, and, by the way, where's the...
There we go. We only allow one slide presentations here.
So, I wanted to give the community a flavor of some of the fun activities that we're involved in with the Rotary Club, and we've got a great showing here. Thank you all from the Rotary Club. There we go. Sharing session in the back. Thank you. So, among the things we're doing, the reason I walked in the door of the Rotary Club about five years ago is I was a former Peace Corps volunteer in Morocco, and I very much wanted to do a give back to the village that took care of me for a couple of years of my life. And so, we threw a party a couple of years ago to raise some money, and then we asked them, what do they need? And they were very clear. They wanted to improve the irrigation ditch. There's a very humble ditch on the left that brings all the water to their crops, and they wanted it to be redone in concrete, and that's exactly what we're doing. And we're now in the year four of the project. We've raised about $200,000. I was there in Morocco about two weeks ago with my older son, and we're very much, we're probably going to be finishing the construction this summer. It's extremely exciting for me personally and for us, the club, and we're connecting with the Rotary Club of Marrakech and clubs throughout, really, the world to bring this to fruition. It's really goes the power of Rotary to what you can do. It's probably the only organization in the world that can pull something like this off, and it's just really deeply meaningful for me. Much closer to home, we're buying garbage cans. We're known for our garbage cans on Laurel Street. We're doing more. We hope to be doing this on Washington Street over by the wineries and the Devil Canyon Brewery. We hope to put a few sets of garbage cans there along that street to help beautify that corridor of San Carlos. We're known for dictionaries. All third graders in the San Carlos district get a dictionary courtesy of Rotary. We raise a lot of money to provide these dictionaries for students. We still believe in paper. We still believe in an actual book. It helps kids. It's good for education. We're very proud of our endowment. We've raised over $1 million, 1.1 million now, for the endowment, and we use that for scholarships. It's a big part of our community push is for scholarships. And among Rotary news, we moved, we were meeting at the Vans in Belmont, and now we're back home in San Carlos. We meet at the Trattoria da Vitoria, a great restaurant, thanks to the owners there. We meet Fridays at noon. Please come. We'd love to see you. And we have a great speaker series. Very proud of the speakers we bring in to showcase some of the best talent in San Carlos and beyond. And I also do want to put in a plug for the Fun Run, which is coming up in the Pancake Breakfast, but the Fun Run in particular, and Mr. Chris Edwards in the back is the source of all that is Fun Run. Tickets are on sale. Look at our website. Look at, there's flyers, et cetera, going around, but the Fun Run will be during hometown days, and it's a great event we throw, and cap it off with pancakes in Burton Park afterwards. So, if you have more, for more information, we've got a great website. There's the email. I'm Steve Carlson. I'm the president, and thank you all.
Thank you very much, Steve. Great presentation. All right. Next presentation tonight is from a young woman I had a chance to meet a few months ago when she received her Girl Scout Gold Star Award, Jenna Williamson. And Jenna, you're welcome to come up and talk to us, and as you're coming up, I'll just briefly, no, come on up. I'll just briefly mention that I was very impressed when I first heard, you know, some months ago about your project involving creative writing, because at the end of the day, knowing how to speak is important. Knowing how to write effectively is a lot more important. So, I applaud you for trying to further that.
My name is Jenna Williamson.
I'd like to call the City Council Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency Housing Authority Regular Meeting to order, and we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance led tonight by the Rotary Club in the form of Mr. Steve Carlson, el presidente.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Steve. Next item is changes to the order of the agenda. Anything suggested by staff or the dais?
Nothing from staff this evening, Mr. Chair.
Anybody, everyone on the dais, okay with the agenda as written? Sequencing? Good. We'll move on from that. Report from closed session. Greg?
There are no reportable actions from the closed session earlier tonight.
Thank you, Greg. And thank you, Crystal, for the food. It was very nice. So item five, presentations. We have several really interesting presentations tonight. We're going to start by having Steve come back up and talk to us about the San Carlos Rotary Club. So there you go.
Thank you, everyone, for having us tonight. Pleased to be here. I've had the pleasure of serving as the president of the San Carlos Rotary Club since last July, and, by the way, where's the...
We only allow one slide presentations here.
So I wanted to give the community a flavor of some of the fun activities that we're involved in with the Rotary Club, and we've got a great showing here. Thank you all from the Rotary Club who've enjoyed it. There we go. The sharing session in the back. Thank you. So among the things we're doing, the reason I walked in the door of the Rotary Club about five years ago is I was a former Peace Corps volunteer in Morocco, and I very much wanted to do a give back to the village that took care of me for a couple of years of my life. And so we threw a party a couple of years ago to raise some money, and then we asked them, what do they need? And they were very clear. They wanted to improve the irrigation ditch. There's a very humble ditch on the left that brings all the water to their crops, and they wanted it to be redone in concrete, and that's exactly what we're doing. And we're now in the year four of the project. We've raised about $200,000. I was there in Morocco about two weeks ago with my older son, and we're very much, we're probably going to be finishing the construction this summer. It's extremely exciting for me personally and for us, the club, and we're connecting with the Rotary Club of Marrakech and clubs throughout, really, the world to bring this to fruition. It's really, goes the power of Rotary, to what you can do. It's probably the only organization in the world that can pull something like this off, and it's just really deeply meaningful for me. Much closer to home, we're buying garbage cans. We're known for our garbage cans on Laurel Street. We're doing more. We hope to be doing this on Washington Street over by the wineries and the Devil Canyon Brewery. We hope to put a few sets of garbage cans there along that street to help beautify that corridor of San Carlos. We're known for dictionaries. All third graders in the San Carlos district get a dictionary courtesy of Rotary. We raise a lot of money to provide these dictionaries for students. We still believe in paper. We still believe in an actual book. It helps kids. It's good for the, good for education. We're very proud of our endowment. We've raised over $1 million, 1.1 million now, for the endowment, and we use that for scholarships. It's a big part of the, our community push is for scholarships. And among Rotary News, we moved, we were meeting at the Vans in Belmont, and now we're back home in San Carlos. We meet at the Trattoria da Vitoria, great restaurant, thanks to the owners there. We meet Fridays at noon. Please come. We'd love to see you. And we have a great speaker series. Very proud of the speakers we bring in to showcase some of the best talent in San Carlos and beyond. And I also do want to put in a plug for the Fun Run, which is coming up, and the Pancake Breakfast, but the Fun Run in particular, and Mr. Chris Edwards in the back is the source of all that is Fun Run. Tickets are on sale. Look at our website. Look at, there's flyers, et cetera, going around, but the Fun Run will be during Hometown Days, and it's a great event we throw, and cap it off with pancakes in Burton Park afterwards. So if you have more, for more information, we've got a great website. There's the email. I'm Steve Carlson. I'm the president, and thank you all.
Thank you very much, Steve. Great presentation. All right. Next presentation tonight is from a young woman I had a chance to meet a few months ago when she received her Girl Scout Gold Star Award, Jenna Williamson. And Jenna, you're welcome to come up and talk to us, and as you're coming up, I'll just briefly, no, come on up. I'll just briefly mention that I was very impressed when I first heard, you know, some months ago about your project involving creative writing, because at the end of the day, knowing how to speak is important. Knowing how to write effectively is a lot more important. So I applaud you for trying to, trying to further that.
My name is Jenna Williamson, and I first became a Girl Scout in 2004. I think these are some pictures of around 2004. While I can't remember now why four-year-old me wanted to be a Girl Scout, I think I wanted to get to know girls from other classes and to follow in my mother's footsteps, since she was a Girl Scout herself. As more and more girls from my troop started dropping out of the program, I stayed in to, all the while, earning my bronze and silver awards to have a chance at the gold award. So as you can tell from my being here, I recently achieved my goal and earned my Girl Scout Gold Award. My project consisted of planning curriculum for and teaching a series of four creative writing workshops at the Belmont Library in the fall of 2017. I invited many of my former teachers from Central and from Carlmont to guest teach activities at each of the workshops, where they delved into subjects such as brainstorming, descriptions, found poetry, and revision. After the last workshop, I compiled written submissions to be published in an online anthology. I thoroughly enjoyed working with the kids at each workshop and completing my project. In the end, my project ended up being over 100 hours of work. And so for any girls out there who might be interested in becoming a Girl Scout or staying a Girl Scout throughout their youth, I urge them to do so. The experiences I had definitely helped bring me into a community and helped me find my drive and motivation to become a better person as an adult. Thank you all so much for your time.
Thank you, Jenna. I really, really appreciate you taking the time to do that. Did anybody have any comments or questions they wanted to make? Actually, for either of the presentations, I should have done that on Steve's as well. Okay. So our next presentation is from Christine Chang, who I understand is a sixth grader at Central Middle School. Come on up, Christine. And she's here to talk to us about her rite of passage experience, otherwise known as Ropes Project, that she just recently completed. So good evening. That's okay. You can pull it down until it's the right height. There you go.
I'm Christine Chang. As you mentioned, I'm in sixth grade at Central Middle School, and I recently completed my Ropes Project on ocean-friendly restaurants. I'm just going to go over what I did for my project and how that affects our community and how we can help the environment in many different ways. So I started with the idea of our Ropes Project, and kids do all sorts of things. They learn to play instruments. They raise money for animal shelters. I've always really cared about the environment, because hopefully it'll be around a lot longer than we will, and a lot of different organisms depend on it. I found the Surf Rider Foundation. They run an ocean-friendly restaurant project, and ocean-friendly restaurants follow certain guidelines, such as using no plastic straws, using non-styrofoam takeout boxes, or installing water-safe toilets and faucets. I'll go in more in depth in just a minute. I convinced Johnston Salt Box to become ocean-friendly, and also Cuisinet on San Carlos Avenue is not yet ocean-friendly, but they are taking strides toward being ocean-friendly. After that, I wrote an article for our local magazine, San Carlos Living. I hope to inspire people to become more, not just ocean-friendly, but environmentally friendly, and to convince more restaurants to become ocean-friendly. I started by, in my Ropes Project, I started by handing out letters to all the restaurants on Laurel Street, hoping some of them respond. The first to get back to me was Mr. Ray B., the owner of Cuisinet on San Carlos Avenue. I missed my first meeting because I forgot about it, but he was, he was very friendly, and he's like, oh, don't worry. We'll just meet next Tuesday. So I walked into the restaurant, and he was still eating a piece of French toast, and he was already, his restaurant was already very environmentally friendly. He had reusable straws, cardboard takeout boxes, and he had already, I noticed he was wearing a bracelet. It was a Four Ocean bracelet, and Four Ocean is another nonprofit organization, and if you donate, you get a bracelet just to show you donated, and I noticed he was wearing that, so I knew he was already very aware of our effects on the environment. After that, I met Mr. Johnston, the owner of Johnston Salt Box on Laurel Street. I went for a little brunch and met two representatives from the Surf Rider Foundation, Britt Benson on the left and Talitha Darrington on the right. Ocean-friendly restaurants are part of just our community, just mostly San Carlos. Sometimes it seems like just one restaurant or two restaurants being ocean-friendly doesn't make a difference, but still, an amount of plastic straws or styrofoam takeout boxes won't make it to the ocean. If you think about, for example, voting, if one person thinks that their vote doesn't make a difference, and they don't vote. But imagine if everyone thought that, but if, imagine if everyone thought that their vote did make a difference. So for ocean-friendly restaurants, if you think, if they think that their restaurant or one straw on the ground won't make a difference, and you leave the straw, the litter, on the ground, that makes a small difference, and it doesn't seem like a lot until you realize that's what everyone's thinking, and soon there's lots of litter. San Carlos already has many things to help the ocean. I'm just going to point out one. By the storm drains, there's always a little sign with a dolphin on it that says, "Flows to Bay", and that reminds people how San Carlos connects to the whole ocean. The storm drains do go directly to the bay, so if I see a plastic bag on the ground by the storm drain, I'll pick it up, because that sign reminds me where that plastic bag is going to end up. About our whole earth, plastic pollution is a big problem. So for my Ropes Project, I decided to stop it, stop plastic pollution at the source. You've probably heard of Reduce, Reuse, Recycle. If we reduce in the first place, we wouldn't have to reuse and recycle. The Great Pacific Garbage Patch, for example, is a patch of garbage out in the Pacific Ocean that's like more than twice the size of Texas. And it's just getting bigger, and people are littering in the ocean. They might not litter directly into the ocean, but if you litter on the sidewalk down Laurel Street, it, where do you think it goes? It flies away. It doesn't magically disappear, and it often ends up in the ocean where animals get to it. You may have heard that turtles, they see plastic bags, and they think they're jellyfish, and they eat them. And what happens is when, these creatures, when they eat plastic, their stomach gets so full of plastic that they don't have room for anything else, and they starve to death. Because plastic never really breaks down all the way. It breaks into microplastics, which are food-sized for animals. So they think it's food, and they eat it, and they just die of eating so much plastic. I would like to point out this picture. It's a little seahorse, and it's holding a cotton swab. And this little seahorse is doing its job. It's trying to clean up its ocean home, which obviously, you know, we put the Q-tip there, but it's never going to be able to clean up the whole ocean, because it's half the size of the Q-tip, or the cotton swab. And you can see in the background, there are plastic bags and other trash floating there. So I don't really think this tiny seahorse is ever going to be able to clean up the ocean, but it's still trying. So we need to try and clean up what we can. What can we do as a community to help the ocean? What if every restaurant up and down Laurel Street were ocean-friendly restaurants? Imagine how much of a difference that would make. All of the plastic that wouldn't be made, first of all, because plastic takes a lot of materials to make, and then it wouldn't go to landfill, so it'd be cheaper. You would have to have so much landfill, and it hopefully wouldn't get littered. And what if every restaurant in San Carlos were ocean-friendly restaurants? Imagine how much trash would not enter our oceans or our landfills. What if we all pitched in to reduce waste in general? The small things like using reusable containers instead of plastic bags, or turning off the faucet when you brush your teeth. You've probably heard this a lot of times. Taking short showers. All these small things add up to a larger goal. Every small action adds to a larger goal. Every little thing you do, like if you see a piece of litter on the ground, like candy wrapper, and you decide to pick it up, that's making a big difference, because if you didn't pick it up, other people would see, and if you set a good example for the other people around you, a lot of trash will get picked up. You can change the world just by doing small things. Like if you go to a restaurant, bring your own cup. You don't have to use a plastic cup. Or ask for, if they have, takeout boxes that aren't styrofoam or plastic, or bring your own container for takeout if you're going to take out. I think we can all change the world if we just start with the small things. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. That was really good and very informative, too. I really appreciate you taking the time to educate us. All right, so we will move on now to public comment. This is a time for folks who wish to address the council on matters not on the agenda tonight, to address us. If you wish to address us on a matter that's on the agenda, we will have time for public comment during each one of those items. Let's see. Okay, so I have two, perhaps three speaker cards. Let me just ask Craig Solinsky? Was that for general comment or on a specific item?
Yes, for regarding the rent, the high rents.
Oh. You know what? We'll include it at this stage. In fact, why don't you, you can be our first speaker, please, followed by David Pollak. And as I always like to remind folks, we do ask you to keep your comments. In about two minutes, there's lights and timers that'll show up there, and I always like to remind folks, too, that if you have something more extensive, you can always reach out to us individually to get together and talk about stuff. So over to you.
Thank you. My name is Craig Solinsky. I'm a 20-year educator with a master's degree. And just as, for an example, I'd like to say that I was living in an apartment here in the Bay Area in 2012. My rent was $1,030 for a one-bedroom. And in 2012, I had to go to the East Coast for family reasons, and when I came back in 2016, I obtained a position on the peninsula. It really wasn't a chosen place for me to be, but I have lived in the East Bay and San Francisco both. But the job was there in, on the peninsula. And at that time, I was forced to have a rent of $2195 for this, an apartment that actually was smaller, a similar one-bedroom. And when I was asked if you could go down on the rent, given my limited income as an educator, I was told by the landlord that it was actually lower than market rate at that time. At this time, my, my rent, that this $2195, that just went up to, and it takes up 66% of my income, so my rent is, is paid for by my paycheck that it comes to 66% for the rent alone. This isn't right. I hadn't, I had to, I have had to eliminate several things in my life, such as a travel budget and other things. And how, how can I save for retirement, living here? And I feel like I really need to, I've been looking every single day to move away, as far away from the Silicon Valley as I can, and I would love to stay in the Bay Area, but I don't see how I can do it. So this is for information reasons. I don't expect that you guys are going to be able to find a rent that's reasonable for my salary, but in some small way, if it could, if it could help and change matters for people like teachers, for, for public servant workers, and for other folks on limited incomes that want to be in the Bay Area. I really, I really like to find that solution, or have folks be able to come to a solution that could have people with varying incomes afford to live here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Craig. Next up is David Pollak, filed by Erica Nelson. And I apologize if I've messed up people's names, as I have a habit of doing.
There we go. I was waiting for the shot clock to get reset here. I wanted to spend my time, my two minutes of fame this evening to talk about commercial development and the jobs, housing imbalance. And I would like to reiterate and support the other voices here this evening to rethink our San Carlos's approach to that. But what I would like to talk to you guys tonight about is my concerns about the community foundation. As everyone knows, $2 million settlement with PG&E. There was a different discussion last year about how to approach it. Some council member reached out to some of the nonprofits in town to discuss it, and then before I knew it, there was, I wasn't really clear on the process, but, okay, a working committee is, has been formed, and they're looking into if they become a nonprofit on their own, or another approach to deal with the settlement money. But I just, I just, just appearance as a, just a citizen in the community, it's just not very transparent. It's not very clear. When I've asked other community members, what do you think? Maybe you should have your voice heard? Well, I can't really say anything, because it'll appear like it's a conflict of interest, because I'm involved with a nonprofit already in town, and it'll look like a land grab. But I'm still concerned that, as opposed to all the community voices that have concerns, that it, it's coming across still as a bit of cronyism, of sort of a retirement gift for Cameron. And I just would urge you guys to take another look at your approach to the foundation, the whole, what to do with the funds, and be transparent and open with the community about that. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Next up is Erica Nelson.
So I have some flyers for you, which I don't know whether you're permitted to receive.
Oh, yes.
So hello, my name is Erica Nelson, and I'm here today to tell you about an event that's being held in San Carlos on May 8th called Stand Up for Public Schools. We hope you will join us to demand action from Sacramento for increased public school funding. I have had children in the public schools for the past eight years, and we've had excellent teachers and a community that's dedicated to providing a safe and engaging environment for students. As you all know, the cost of living in the Bay Area has risen exponentially, as, as has the financial success of the region, but funding for education has not kept up. In fact, California is consistently at the bottom when it comes to funding for K-8 schools. California ranks towards the bottom in per pupil spending, 50th in teacher-to-student ratio, 50th in library-to-student ratio, 49th in guidance counselor-to-student ratio, and 47th in administrator-to-student ratio. San Carlos is particularly impacted by this because of the high cost of living. It's a high-cost-of-living county, but receives some of the lowest funding in the area. Despite the economic success in the region, San Carlos has consistently experienced budget issues, and most recently has had a budget shortfall that will require cuts in spending and staffing. As a result of funding issues, neighboring Redwood City has also had to close some schools. We should no longer accept the compromise of larger class sizes, austere budgets, and periodic school closures. It's time to demand action from our elected officials in Sacramento on this issue. So on May 8th, we encourage you all from 4 to 6, there'll be a community activity along the peninsula. There's several communicated... There's several communities participating in Belmont, Redwood City, San Mateo, and I believe Burlingame as well, to raise awareness for this issue to our elected officials. Specifically, we're asking for a supplement to public school funding for regional cost of living differences, to negotiate a bigger increase in the general fund, and support Assembly Bill 39, which would seek to have targets on per pupil spending in California. So we invite you to join this movement and support the cause on May 8th from 4 to 6. We'll be lining El Camino, along El Camino and then up San Carlos Avenue, and then throughout the communities along El Camino and in Redwood City as well. So please join us. We hope we'll have your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Erica. Is there anybody else who wishes to address the council on items not on the agenda? All right, moving on, we'll move on to council communications and announcements, brief items of discussion or items that council members want to bring to the public's attention. Adam.
I just want to update on, I had a meeting with CCG last week, and just want to give two quick highlights. One, we approved the JPA for the Managed Lanes Project, so that's moving forward from our end, waiting for MTC to do that. And then secondly, I think the topic's going to be covered later, but we're, CCG is sending a letter to Sacramento for SB 50. I was asking for feedback from the council, but I'm assuming that we will approve this letter shortly. I'll take that. And then some of the work from the Housing Subcommittee that I'm gathering already, we'll bring that to CCG for their letter.
Thank you, Adam. Ron?
Thank you, Mark. I would just like to express my thanks to the public who came to the wildfire meeting that we had on the 13th. There were about 80 people there. It was one of, first of two meetings, and it was nice to see the community out. We got a lot of constructive ideas, and I think it was very well done. It was moderated by Peninsula Conflict Resolution Center. I thought our fire chief, Dave Pucci, did a wonderful job. And anyway, I just want to encourage people to stay involved, and I look forward to more opportunities for our public to communicate in these type of meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Laura?
Thank you, Mayor Chairman Olbert. So, a couple items. Peninsula Clean Energy, there was a press release that went out earlier this week. San Carlos residents saved a total of $829,000 on their energy. It's part of a joint powers authority, and 95% of that energy is renewable. I also attended a Homes For All Steering Committee meeting, and they are reconfiguring their task forces. They'll be continuing to focus on funding, legislation, housing, and mobility issues, but they're creating three new ones. One will focus on second unit, another one will focus on housing and climate change, and a third will focus on housing and insecurity. So those new task forces will likely be up and running by this summer. Thank you.
Thanks, Laura. Sarah, did you have anything?
No. Oh, are you going to talk about Earth Day?
I was going to briefly mention Earth Day, but you can, okay. Okay. So I have just a couple of brief announcements. One is I got to attend the Earth Day activity on Saturday that staff and volunteers in the community had organized, and it was really well-attended. I think we had, what, about 50 or 60 people who were going around this year picking up trash on Laurel Street. So among, besides cleaning up Laurel Street, we could actually study it and figure out what we might learn from it about how to better control it. Met some delightful new residents and their two young daughters, who I was walking with for part of the time, picking up stuff. That was a lot of fun. And I think probably, for me personally, the thing that hit home the most is, as I told the folks there that day, I vividly remember going to the very first Earth Day celebration way back in the Dark Ages. And, yes, I didn't want to actually have to admit what year it was, Ron. And, you know, one of the, one of the things I've learned as I've gotten older, and I made this comment last time about housing, but it applies here as well. Much of the business in the council relates to dealing with issues of ownership, who owns what, and how ownership of different things interacts with each other. But it's worth remembering, we're all stewards. Whether we own things or not, we are all stewards. And part of our duty is to hand off to the people who come after us a place that's at least as good as what we got. And Earth Day is part of that. And it was delightful to see all the young people there, sort of continuing the tradition. And I, too, had an opportunity to attend the second of the two wildfire community meetings. It was a great meeting, as Ron said. It was even greater than what Ron said because I had 160 people show up. So thank you for all the extra people who showed up so I could beat Ron. No, it was not a competition, and again, staff did a great job there. So with that, we will move on to the consent calendar. Consent calendar is a set of items that the council approves en masse without, in general, discussion or comment, although individual council members can ask that an item be removed and addressed separately. And in fact, I'm going to ask that we remove Item A to G, the letter that Adam was referring to a minute ago, and we'll deal with that later on in the meeting. But is there a motion for the remaining items on the consent calendar?
I'd like to move something from the calendar, too.
Go for it.
8C?
8C, the Chilton Park Master Plan. Okay, so we'll move C and G. Anything else? If not, is there somebody who wants to make a motion on what's remaining?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to approve the consent calendar items 8A, B, D, E, and F. Did I miss any?
Nope.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Crystal, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
And Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
All right. In the interest of making sure that we get time to do our study session, Item 9A, I'm going to put the items that were pulled off the consent calendar at the end of the meeting tonight. So 9A, we are going to continue the presentation and discussion on San Carlos's efforts in addressing the essential workforce housing crisis, which has continued from our April 8th, 2019 city council meeting. Al, I believe you said you wanted to do some introduction, reintroduction?
Yes. Good evening, Honorable Chair, members of the city council. What I'd like to do is start off, just taking a few minutes to reframe the issues that we talked about last time. I'd like to do is start with, there we go.
Sorry about that, Al. I just learned what that button does.
Ah ha.
It was by accident, I assure you.
Okay. I won't talk for very long, but what I'd like to do is start just reframing the discussion a little bit and talking about, a little bit about what we talked about last time to reframe it, of course. And then we also have Martin Romo, our Housing and Economic Development Manager here, and we have Lisa Porras, who is our Planning Manager. And they will be sharing in answering some of the questions that you may have this evening and the public. And so with that, just to back up a little bit and start with where we started the last time, and our general plan was adopted not too long ago in terms of the life of the general plan. General plan is a 20-year document, and what it said back in 2009 is that the new general plan would increase housing supply in our community by about 1,436 units by the year 2030. And that would increase our population by 3,446. One of the things that we talked about at the last meeting is that in terms of the amount of housing development that is occurring in our community in the last few years, it's really more than we've seen in decades and somewhat unprecedented. And so, on a broader level, what we've seen is that the plans, in terms of land use regulations, zoning, and general plan, have done a pretty good job in setting the table for new housing supply development in the areas that were designated as good areas in our community. What we show on the screen here in terms of our numbers is there, we have our Regional Housing Needs Assessment Numbers, and the state gives those Regional Housing Needs Assessment Numbers to every city in the state. And ours is a total of 596 units by the year 2023. Now, in terms of our ability to reach that number, we believe that we're going to either hit it or exceed it by the year 2023 in terms of overall supply. But what we talked about last time is that the real difficulty that we see is in providing essential housing, workforce housing in our community, and hitting the numbers that we were provided with by the state. And you can see those on the right side of the screen there, 5, 190, 94, and 100. So we're quite sure, we believe that we have about 344 remaining essential housing or workforce units that we need to provide by, in this reporting period. So, and at that last meeting, we talked about some of the constraints and opportunities in trying to assist in providing more supply and more essential workforce housing in the community. And where we left it at the last meeting is, during our Q&amp;A period and right before, we talked about some of the policy questions that could start the council on this discussion and study of some of the potential things that the city could do. And I just wanted to focus on one really quickly, just to kind of give you a flavor of some of the ideas that came out. And during the question and answer period, one of the questions, what were some of the creative solutions that the city might think about? And this screen shows something that we recently discovered in another project that we were working on. We were, are looking at heights in the downtown area, building heights, particularly along the west side of Laurel Street, all the way down where it abuts single-family residential. Over the years, there's been concern from some of the residents along Walnut Street about some of the taller buildings going up in that area, and we seem to have reached an agreement and some consensus between the residents and developers that three-story buildings are appropriate. Now, the zoning in that area would allow for four stories along that area, but we've been, the planning commission has been approving three-story buildings. Now, one of the discoveries that we made in terms of looking at the box that you could develop in, and looking at lowering the box, making it smaller, is when we started to dig into the data and the changes that result, and some of the ideas about density, which we talked about last time, and number of units that you could get, we made a surprising discovery. And what this screen shows, for instance, is in that left-hand column on A is the existing mixed-use neighborhood zoning that is along Laurel Street, along that corridor on Laurel. And right now, it only allows for 20 dwelling units to the acre, and that's what our general plan intentionally set the dwelling, dwelling units per acre at that level, in recognition that single-family homes next door are much lower in terms of number of units. So what we discovered is, we could actually lower the heights of the building and go to three stories, but by increasing the density limits, we could actually effectuate more dwelling units. So what we've been seeing, and what we talked about at the last meeting, is that developers have been developing much larger units, but fewer units, to get in under our BMR threshold, where they would have to provide units or pay the fee, the below-market-rate fee. But what we found out from our study, just by circumstance, is that we could actually lower the height of the buildings, but by increasing the density, we could, and some other things, we could actually get more units. Now, the unit size you see at the bottom kind of goes down, and you, by increasing the density by 10 in each category, you increase the number of units. But at the same time, we could keep the height of the building, the number of stories, at three stories and 34 feet, which is a low building. And so I just wanted to show that as an example of some of the studies that could be done, and some of the things that we've stumbled across in the recent, in recent work that we've been doing. So with that, I'm going to conclude and open it up for questions. We did answer the questions that the council had. We had 43 questions, and we provided you with answers to those questions, and we're prepared to talk about those as well this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Al. Let me ask my colleagues, I, as I did last time, I'm going to do public comment before we get into the more in-depth discussion, but if there are specific questions about this material that Al just shared with us, please feel free to ask them now, or you can ask them later. I just want to make the option available. Okay. Thank you, Al. So what I'm going to do, once again, public comment on this particular item. I have five or six speaker cards. If there's anybody else who wants to address us, please feel free to fill out a card and give it to Crystal. But we'll start with Mike King, followed by Ron Payolvasan. Did I get that right? Good, thank you. Finally, eighth time, eighth time lucky.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, former mayor.
Sorry, I can't call you chairman, but Frank is really the big chairman of the board. I'm here actually to talk to you about how you had this discussion before about housing, and I may go a little bit over, I'll try to speak quickly. You heard the numbers already, which we talked about, that we do have a crisis. And coincidentally, before I prepare my notes, this morning's Mercury commented that it has a study on Bay Area growth, too fast or too slow, and over 74% of all people responsible have said developments in the city are moving too fast or just about right. I'm not here to decide whether they're fast or right. I'm here to talk about having some type of a pause or moratorium, if you want to call it that. Because Al did indicate that your housing numbers, I have 599 from the general plan. And by the way, I'm not going to read to you from the general plan, but I got a copy this Friday and reviewed it. It's been, it's been a while since I've seen it. He's right. I think he will make the overall number. I don't think there's any problem. And on the delay, I'm not here to delay any of the housing developments. I think about 100, according to my calculations from the plan, 80 to 90% of your direct housing numbers are going to come out of Devonshire Canyon, not Black Mountain. If you look at the plan and you see where these addresses are, they're Devonshire Canyon, Grande, Madera, we used to call Hotel Madera, and the top of the hill. So you'll make the above numbers. But where do we get the below-market numbers? Well, the Housing Opportunity Site, which is on page 53, the actual numbers are 1,336. That's, and I think Al had it up there. That's the plan around Laurel, El Camino, Walnut, and then there's a cone that goes up San Carlos Avenue. And in that area, these low to moderate incomes, very low, low and extremely low, add up to about 181 units. That's almost 47% of your total number. So where are we going to find them? Where are we going to put them? And when I looked at it, I said, you know, this place looks very familiar? This is the old RDA area. And the basis for this old RDA designation was blight, not housing. Now, I think Al's right. I think the numbers are there, but when you really dig into the numbers, and it's in Appendix B, you go there, there are a lot of onesies and twosies. There are 1,300 units in there, but they may develop over time. And even if they're half-right, that's 670 units, which you'll get the housing theme. So what am I recommending the moratorium for, or a stall or delay? Is to revisit the general plan. Not the whole plan, just the housing element. And some of the numbers in there seemed a little dated, and I asked Jeff before the meeting that, you know, I don't know when they're updated, but looking at the actual goals, goal number seven was special needs properties, as for people with disabilities and wherever. I'm recommending that you look at that and call it essential housing. Really glad to see that you've said, let's identify essential housing. And essential housing are, right out of the general plan, those people in the, low, extremely low, very low, and even moderate. I think the moderate numbers has to be in there. I think the moderate numbers has to be in there. In addition to that, I think you could make some quick kills. Eliminate the in-lu housing fee. Make them build the units. I'm not sure you want to address 15%, the minimum, because they won't get built. You know, 15% or 25% of three or four is really nothing. But you need to put some teeth into it, and teeth into what I call housing number goal, goal number four, and that is the second units. By teeth, I mean money, that you have to have money. In the old days, we used to say, you don't start a project unless you got the money in your hand. So, one of the suggestions that I looked at and talked to Al about a little bit about is to create a vehicle.
Mike, can you move towards wrapping up, please?
Replace the RDA with a, I think they call it a housing sector agency. It's a nonprofit. You do the building, the city does the building. Fine, it's just the same thing we did 15 years ago. That's how we bought 777 Walnut Street. That's how we built the east side unit. And finally, not finally, but a quick hats off to Jeff, your letter to Sacramento on SB 50. I actually read it in the newspaper this morning, I guess before they published it. But I was going to recommend that you take a stand on 50, and the stand basically is not opposing it, because I think they got the right idea in mind, it's just they're going to take away local, local control. Quick one is on this, on the actual change to the opportunity site.
Mike, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but you're up to like almost five minutes.
Okay, I'll finish up. Take a look at the opportunity site area, and consider east side, namely, the old HIA area. In fact, there's, there is where you could find expanded area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Ron Pyovason, followed by Brian Perkins.
Yeah, my name is Ron Pyovason. I would like to also talk about the housing issues. So, in particular, I understand that there's quite a bit of new commercial development that's being brought into the city. I think some numbers I've seen is up to 2 million new square feet of commercial, commercial development happening within San Carlos. Personally, I think that's fantastic. I'm actually excited about new economic development coming into the city. But I also have to be aware of the fact that that's going to bring in a lot of new workers, and you have to ask, where are they going to live? How are they going to commute in and out of San Carlos? And what is that, what are all these new workers, who are welcome, who I should, who I should think are welcome to the city, but how are these new workers and their quest to find housing, how's that going to exacerbate an already, you know, significant housing crisis that we're facing? And we're hearing stories from that, about people who are negatively impacted by this housing crisis. So, with that, I think it comes time where we need to stop and think and understand what it is, you know, we're building. How can we address a crisis that's already upon us and not, you know, go down a path that would only exacerbate the crisis? So, with that in mind, I'd like to propose that we have a moratorium on new commercial development, and to give the community some time to think about, you know, the commercial development, think about how we're going to address the housing crisis, think about how we're going to accommodate not just the new workers, but the people who already live in San Carlos, and who are, you know, who are essential to our community and who are negatively impacted by, by the crisis. To be clear, I don't very much like the idea of the moratorium, but I think we're at a point where we need it, where it's, it's a necessity, because we do need to stop and think and understand what it is we're building, where are the new workers going to, how are we going to accommodate the new workers, and then how are we going to provide for those essential workers who are already in our community? So, just in summary, I would like to propose a moratorium, I would, sorry, I would ask the council, consider a moratorium on new commercial development to give the community time to think about how to properly address the housing crisis. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Brian Perkins, followed by David Crabbe.
Thank you, Brian Perkins. I just want to echo some of the other comments that were made. In fact, Councilwoman Palmer Lohan, last time, suggested we needed a community dialogue, and I think we do need a community dialogue, because what's going on now is going to overtake, or is going to set the pattern for the next 35 to 40 years. If a lot of this commercial development happens, then we're simply going to have facts on the ground, and we won't have any capacity to change after those facts on the ground are created. So, a short-term moratorium is a great way of making sure that everybody's expectations are well set. Short-term moratorium allows for the conversation around the community to start, and hopefully for some resolution. Peninsula Conflict Resolution Center does these sorts of things. They have a service that allows the community to get together and talk about their expectations around growth and development. So, I would suggest that the council and the staff contact them, and I do think that a brief moratorium may be an excellent idea. And the gentleman that spoke here earlier, who was a teacher, we have to keep in mind, if we start down this path of commercial development, teachers have a choice to make every nine or 10 months as to whether or not they're going to continue to live in the community. And the more pressure we put on people like that, the more you'll just see that wave of folks, good people leaving the community, unable to serve everybody. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Brian. David Crabbe, followed by Hainuan.
Good evening, Mayor Albert, and members of the council. I'm Dave Crabbe. Some of the things I'm going to say are already been said. I think it's time for a community outreach event. I would suggest in the Homes For All events that have been going on up and down the peninsula, and I think most of you on the council are already familiar with them, I think it's definitely something we should do, somewhere where people can talk, more informal setting than standing two minutes in front of a dais, not a very comfortable way to solve a problem. So, I suggest that, if you could, had direct staff to look into working with the Homes For All, to put a couple of events on, that would be great. Second is, because that will take time, and we need to think this through a little bit more, I'm also in agreement that we might look at a moratorium on new commercial development of a certain size, I would might say, like maybe over 10,000 or 20,000 square feet. You know, I'm concerned about, you know, someone coming in like the Windy Hill project at 500,000 square feet and 1,600 jobs, and you get another one of those coming in. And if you, if we have 2 million square feet of office building, you could be talking between 6,000 and 10,000 jobs, depending on how dense the jobs are packed in those buildings. And nowhere, and nothing in the, in our code allows for housing in the area that they're going to be built in. So, I look for that. And I do think the suggestion of looking at revisiting the housing element at this point would be a very good one, because I think that time has just caught up to, caught up to us, you know, no, none of us thought that in, what, nine years, or whatever it is, since we did the general plan, that the economy would have gone as bonkers as it has. And I think we need to rethink that. 596 units of housing in relationship to potentially 2 million square feet of new office building is just, it makes no sense at all anymore. So, I suggest, if you could, look at the housing element. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Hainuan, followed by Robert Stafford.
Good evening. Can you hear me? I'd like to continue your discussion about the housing. When I left, last, two weeks ago, two, three weeks ago, last previous meeting, I wanted to provide a little, you guys asked, why are for-profit developers not building affordable housing as required? One of the main concerns is the construction cost. It's been skyrocketing, as we all know, which leads to lack of skilled workers, or they move away, or they have to commute far from Gilroy or North Bay, Marin County, and such. And also, due to the tech worker, the changing industry, the, you know, the aging workforce of the construction workers are, you know, just diminishing by the minute. And so, there, you know, cost is one of the biggest issue for for-profit developers, which I have background of. And speaking of which, I, one of the things that saves a lot of, that's very cherished by for-profit developers, is time. If you cannot provide them any kind of incentives for cost, maybe help them out with time, meaning speed up their approval process, speed up their construction process, speed up their permitting process. If you can reduce a, you know, approval process for entitlement, for example, from cutting from nine to 12 months to about six to eight months, or even less, it could help sort of, you know, provide them a little more incentive to build here. So, saving time is a huge issue for developers. Another thing is because there's a lot of small lots, developers aren't, the idea is that you're always going to have the smaller developers unless they can string together a lot more, you know, contiguous lots, and which, what Al suggested in providing a cap limit to its, the dwelling unit size, putting around 1,000 square feet per, which is average nowadays for a modern apartment, which is, you know, is appropriate. Everyone is trying to reduce their individual footprint, so I would suggest limiting, you know, providing a threshold for both a low, you know, minimum square footage, and a high, you know, around 1,500 and 1,800 square feet, I would say is appropriate. And one last thing that I would suggest is to help the developers reduce costs, whether it be reducing parking fees or reducing park fees, that would be something that, you know, developers would look for. With that said, I think that's all I got. Hopefully, it's, hopefully it can help out.
Thank you, Hi, I appreciate that. Last card I have at this point is Robert Stafford.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. You could look around and say that the execution of the general plan has been exemplary, very well-managed town, but SB 50 in some form is coming. The question is, what's the parallel and what's the analogy to BART? Can you take BART down to the peninsula? What would our culture be like today if we had BART? Probably not so many buses on the road. Are we at the same point on a societal basis today? Probably uncomfortable as it is. The question becomes, though, how are you going to articulate the nuance to grab the legislative intent of a very brave senator from San Francisco? I think he has done an exemplary job to force a conversation, but I think it's, as Jeff said, it's required nuance. Nuance is going to overwhelm staff. That means consultants who will get it right and wrong, but you have to trust staff. You have to be able to control the temperature in this room. The hurtful language that's used against staff, against projects, has to stop. This has to be a collaborative conversation and not a demonization of people with differing points of view. Gavin Newsom, Governor Newsom, isn't backing down. If you guys really want to do something, you'd probably get at least five people here to vote Republican. There's no opposition party. So, the juggernaut from the state's coming. The question is, is it SB 4, is it SB 50? It's going to be a matzo ball, but the opportunity, though, is think about daycare in almost every commercial development. If something's adjacent to multifamily, it's going to be hard to stop the four-story, the compatibility argument that Al brings up, which is true, I think is going to be lost in the repercussions of some form of SB 50. Ask yourself this today, could a synagogue get built here today? Could a school get built here today? They're only zoned in residential zoning. Probably not. There's no tax, there's too many people, what are they praying for? I mean, think about it, those kids. So, really, the larger conversation is just beginning. Take a ride on BART and think to yourself, what was it the old boys in golf pants didn't like about BART? Was it the taxes? Or was it that those people from San Francisco might come down to the peninsula and actually live here? Look around Silicon Valley now, and we're blessed with diversity. SB 50 is a societal levy that's going to, I think, do wonders if it's nuanced, as Jeff says. But you ask yourself the big questions, and the moratorium just doesn't feel like it fits in that conversation.
Thank you. Thank you, Robert. Last card I have is David Pollak. If there's anybody else who'd like to address the council on this item, please feel free to fill out a card and give it to Crystal.
Hi again, everyone. I learned something, I'm participating in Citizens Academy, which I think is the greatest program I've ever participated in, in San Carlos. And last week, Planning Department and Housing was on the agenda, and Al and his team spoke. And one of the things that he shared with, with the group was around the general plan vision 2030. And one of the tenants that is integral to that plan is a statement that says that people who work in the city should be able to afford to live here. So, that's part of, it's already part of our city plan, and I appreciate if we could find ways to execute on that. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Again, one last time, if there's anybody else who would like to address the council on this item? Okay? Seeing none, we will continue with, Al, is there further staff? There must be, in terms of answering the questions that we bombarded you with after the last meeting. So, is staff going to go through those?
Yes, Mr. Chair. We were planning on going through each of the questions. We were going to respond to follow-up questions that the chair or the council had on those. So, we're happy to answer any questions or follow-up or dig deeper into some of those issues.
Okay, hang on a second, I'm not sure I understand. So, did everybody send, I know I sent questions in, did everybody send questions in? So...
They're all in the, they're all in the packet with the answers.
Okay, I thought there was going to be a staff sort of presentation component on it. All right, that's fine. Nope, that's fine. In that case, we will open it up for discussion and further questions of staff and whatnot. So, but...
I was just going to say, is this kind of a general jump in, or are you going to just tell us as you please?
I was going to suggest that we try the, I don't know if I like the technical term, general jump in, but I prefer to think of it more just as an open forum discussion. So, why don't we do that rather than go through the chair, and if it starts getting out of hand, we'll, we'll manage it. So, have at it.
Can I just ask, are we talking about having a discussion, or asking questions, or both?
Both.
Both in? Both, okay. Sorry, okay. All right, I had a question. Al, can you just go back to the slide, the stuff you touched on today, the scenarios? I guess my, one question was, when you talk about the density per acre for A, B, C, D, and these different options, is that sort of a minimum or a maximum, or what number are you, and I have a couple of follow-ups to that, but...
Sure. So, at the top of the screen, you see dwelling units per acre, and that is a maximum. So, the city, yeah, the city and most general plans set a limit on the amount of housing that can go per acre in different zones of the city. And they're decided, you know, based on the physical characteristics or geographical characteristics of a neighborhood, or its location to downtown or mass transit. So, you have, in downtown, for instance, you have a lot of apartment buildings around, closer, within a quarter mile of the train station, and that's where the city of San Carlos has always allowed higher densities. So, that's, it's a maximum. We don't have any minimums, and we can talk about that idea.
Right, and I think that's one of the things you touched on two weeks ago, is maybe putting a minimum density in, on top of it, because that would maybe get away from some of these 3,500 units, get away from the developers trying to not hit the seven units for the BMR, and so there's a lot of things that play into that. And so, I guess, I get your point on where we're transitioning from sort of commercial or multifamily or higher, higher level units to increase the density, and then we can sort of hit numbers without impacting maybe the single-family neighborhoods. But that wouldn't say, on, let's say, east side of Laurel and certain parts, or El Camino, where we could sort of get both, where we'd increase density and keep the height of that 50 feet, and we could obviously do more with that as well. So, you're just talking about from that transition side, which makes sense, but you're not talking about sort of in general, just increasing, you're talking, height can play a role as well.
Yes, it can. And in fact, this is just a study on one particular area where we have our mixed-use neighborhood zone. However, this, this idea could play out in any of those higher-density zones in the city. There's, there's other ideas. So, you could, you could increase density in those areas where the maximum density in San Carlos is 59 dwelling units to the acre along San Carlos Avenue and in the downtown, in and around the along San Carlos Avenue and in the downtown, in and around the downtown. That's where we have focused the max. You could consider increasing that density. The other thing you could do is eliminate density altogether. You could say, we're going to base it on just the form of the building. You could say, well, we just are going to allow for 50-foot height in that area, and you can build as many houses as you want, as long as you stay within that envelope. So that's another concept.
Great, thank you.
I'll jump in. So given a lot of our discussions, it sounds to me like we can, we don't need, if we did nothing to the general plan, we're going to meet our goals by 2023, right? And maybe exceed them?
In terms of the housing supply numbers, yes. But the below market, we're not going to.
Of course, we're not going to meet those below-market.
Yes.
Numbers, okay. So the dilemma that's been developing in recent, recent weeks is that there, there's an increasing community sentiment that, yeah, we need, we need to do something about housing. You talk to a developer around here and they say, I just can't afford to build housing. So, and we've got people that don't want more commercial development, but that's where the profit is with the developer. So the question in my mind is, how do we reconcile those things? And maybe what you've come up with in this slide is a partial, is a partial answer to that. All right, so it's a little bit rhetorical, but, but you know, that's the dilemma that we've been facing. Developers, I mean, I had a, I talked to a friend, well, Steve Divney, all right? He used to be on the Planning Commission. He's a commercial real estate broker, and he's also talked to Laurel. And he said, we can't afford to build any, any residential housing, it's just too expensive. But when he builds that commercial development, he's bringing in how many jobs? I mean, 500, 1,000, maybe 1,500? So I get the argument that we are just, by doing that, that brings us revenue. That's good for our bottom line, but it just makes our problem worse. So what I'm wondering is, if we make just some basic changes such as you've outlined here, do we really? I mean, not that I'm not open to it, but do we really need to change the general plan?
If you change the density, if you increase density beyond any of our thresholds that we've established, yes, you need to change the general plan. Anytime that you increase density, what that does is it adds more housing, it adds more population, it adds more traffic and circulation. So those are the, those are the reasons that you need to amend your general plan. Now, you can do these amendments in strategic ways. You can identify a specific area of the community where you believe that more housing supply or more workforce housing should be established. So you can take a look at the areas where it makes the most sense to do more housing supply or more BMR and focus on those. So the intensity and breadth of your general plan amendment and the cost and the time could be more focused in those areas. And you might actually get more of what you want by kind of exploring it and focusing down in these areas where you will have the most impact. So yes, you will need to change it, but again, you might be able to do it in more strategic ways.
Is that, is that a time-consuming process?
Yes, general plan, again, it depends on the, the breadth and extent of the general plan amendment. You might just take a, a specific area like the area around where you have most of your apartments or within a quarter mile of transit. In the planning world, that is where you want to focus, you know, from a just purely planning standpoint, that's where you want to focus your, your housing because it's walkable, it's close to transit. So if you focus it down in those areas, it's less time-consuming than if you just open up the whole general plan. For instance, when we did our general plan amendment, it was back in 2009, and we had a downturn in the economy. There was nothing happening in San Carlos, and we had the staff resources to devote all our efforts on doing that. We did it in record time, we did it in about 18 months. It costs about $1 million to do our general plan and our environmental document with consultant time and staff time. So that, but that was the whole thing. Now, if you, again, if you do it in a more focused manner, you know, you could do something in six months. You could do something in nine months or less. Again, it just depends on what we're talking about. And so it'd be identifying some basic ideas that the council wanted us to explore, and maybe we could bring some ideas back and then have you guide us into these areas that you think would be the, the best solutions for what you want to do.
I'll pause and.
Well, that's okay. Remember, the rules are we can all just jump in.
I know, but I just had a sense that maybe I should give other people a chance to ask some questions.
That's okay, we can be rude and interruptive if we need to. No, what I wanted, I just wanted to inject a couple of things. One is, it is, you know, this perspective is about 18 months out of date. But if anything, I think the market has probably gotten even hotter. I don't know if I've mentioned this before, but, but Mike Field, who was the original developer for the Meridian 25 project, told me point blank that he would prefer, from a profitability point of view, to be building high-density housing. He would make more money off of it. Now, maybe he was saying that because he wanted me to find some way where he could make some more money than he would, than he would have otherwise. I can't tell you that. But, you know, with all due respect to Steve Divney, he is just one perspective, and here's another perspective that's diametrically opposed to it, who's actually in the business of building stuff. So, you know, the other thing too that, that I hope we keep in mind as we go through these discussions is because we've started to not focus on, but circle a little bit around sort of, well, gee, you know, we don't want to bite off more than we can chew, or gee, we're sort of doing a good enough job of meeting our numbers. And, and I think actually staff has done a great job over the last few years in making sure that we meet our numbers specified by the state. But this very much reminds me of, you know, the old joke about the medical professionals sitting around going, we did everything right and the patient still died. Okay, I mean, even the state numbers about housing, I'd argue, are just flat-out wrong. Now, I mean, they, they, I doubt they were deliberately designed to be wrong. It's just as somebody said a few minutes ago, the way the economy has performed is just outstrip everybody's imagination. But, you know, we need to, we need to kind of look at, maybe assess what we think the reality is and try and address that and not just, not just say, well, okay, we're, we're meeting our targets. Meeting targets is good. Trying to avoid situations where we're driving teachers and other essential parts of our community out of our community is not good. And it doesn't matter how many targets we've met, if that's what's happening. The, one specific question I had, Al, kind of as a follow-up to a question I had asked offline. So I guess maybe I'm under the misimpression. I thought we had somewhat more flexibility, or at least it was not quite as difficult as I, I'm interpreting the staff answer to be, to imply, to do things like create what I think of as overlay zones or overlay districts. In other words, an area that is zoned for commercial, but we decree, make findings, studies, whatever, and say, but if somebody wants to build high-density housing here, they can do that too. So we haven't sort of taken away one use, could just sort of said, you can put another use on top of it. Is that even possible? If so, what's involved in doing something like that? And does it, has anybody ever done anything like that?
Yes, I mean, it's, it's, it's possible. And, you know, you have to kind of look at all the same things that you would look at for a general plan amendment. And it's likely that you would have to amend your general plan if you floated some kind of a zone over an area. Floating zones are typically used for things like, you know, you already allow, like in our community, you allow single-family, but we have some hillside areas of our community, and we float an overlay zone. We call it hillside overlay because it has unusual topography, and we need to recognize some of those things for those people. To float like residential over commercial is a much more unusual thing. I'm not sure, we would have to explore that, see what other cities have actually done that. If you're gonna, if you're going to take industrial or commercial land and allow for housing, you're still going to need to have a general plan that says that you can do that and how many units per acre you, you do there. So we would need to kind of explore those possibilities and what is the best. Perhaps the best thing to do, and overlay zones can be, like you say, you could float a zone over, but it would be ineffective. So you need to assess the effectiveness of, of that particular tool versus another tool.
Okay. Anything from the side of the table?
I have a follow-up question to that. So a housing overlay zone is different than what you were responding to Ron's question with. With, can you explain the difference between Mark's question and Ron's question and the different approaches?
Yes. So the idea of a, of a floating zone is, let's say you have an area of the city and you want to, like, I think like Mark alluded to, you have commercial industrial area and you want to allow housing there. So you float, you get a, a map and you draw a line around a circle and you say, we're going to float this housing opportunity or allowance over commercial industrial area. And it's, and it shows on a map and you say, okay, we'll allow housing to float over this commercial. So you could do one or the other, right? But it's, it's usually where uses are compatible. So you float a housing overlay over housing areas, or you float an overlay zone for commercial uses over a commercial zone, i.e. entertainment zone. We have one in our community. We have a floating zone out in the, in the commercial industrial where we said, we're going to allow for entertainment to occur in the industrial zone and float that zone. But those are two compatible, right? They're both commercial retail-type uses. So the, the concept of floating to, you know, very different types of uses is something that we, that I'm not familiar with, and we need to explore and see if other communities have done that. As opposed to looking at your community and, and the assets that you have that lean in the direction of more effective for housing, i.e. areas that are closer to mass transit, that are walkable, that have streets where you can have mobility from different types of, you know, scooters and pedestrians and cars and everything put together. And where does it make most sense in your community to do a particular, like, like housing, for instance? And, and so that would be looking at your general plan and your zoning together. They're two different things. The zoning, of course, is, is more like the standards, like height setbacks, floor area ratio, whereas the general plan is the amount of units that you can get per acre and policy. It's more of a policy document. But the state says those two have to go together. So they're kind of entirely different tools and ideas, and we could explore both of them. I hope that answered your question.
Yeah, thank you. So I wanted to thank Steph for compiling or answering all those questions last week. I read them and it was a lot of work, I'm sure that you all put in it. And my takeaway from it was that I, well, I know more than I did two weeks ago. This is such a complex issue, and I am no expert in this at all. But I do know that there are 1,200 people on the waiting list for affordable housing. And while we'll meet our unit numbers, we're not going to meet our deep levels of affordability. And we have a goal of getting to a certain number of those at each level by 2023. That sounds to me like it's at risk. We heard from the survey report, again, two weeks ago, that a third of the community is not feeling favorable about development and what that brings with it, the traffic and congestion and that type of thing. And so a couple of things. One is, I'm pleased that in our calendar, we just approved to move forward on community engagement. And so one question I have for that is, would it be possible to bring that effort up? I know that there's several tactics that have been laid out, but it would be great if we could accelerate that. The second thing is around the comments made about commercial development moratorium. I don't even know where to begin in terms of what the implications are. But one thing that jumps to mind is if we were to do that, it could potentially put commercial linkage fees at risk for us. And the commercial linkage fees are an important resource for affordable housing. So I'd need some help to try to understand the implications of that. But, but ultimately, I think what I, what I would look for would be from the experts on the team about how can we hit, at a minimum, 344 affordable units by 2023, which is what we're obligated to do by the state. And I think that's kind of where I landed after doing all of this reading is, you know, you come to us, Al, with your expertise and you share with us all these different options, and I can't for the life of me figure out how to put it together. I don't, I don't, I'm not that expert. So I would love it if the, the, the team could, you know, come forward with a plan. So I'd put that out as a possibility, a way to approach this.
Adam? I know you said you.
Oh, yeah, I had a question. I want to jump in on the previous comment, I guess, about the housing overlay issue. I mean, I think for me, what I would love to think about and consider is, you know, we have like enterprise zones for business or other things. Could we not have like a housing opportunity zone or something to that equivalent where there's some benefits to developers to go in and say, hey, along Laurel, parts of Laurel or parts of El Camino or even east St. Carlos Avenue, there's some tax benefits, there's maybe some expedited SEQA, there's some other things that we can put in place to encourage housing as an option over commercial development. And some of those are, are zoned for multi-use, they're zoned for other things. But how do we incentivize that? And to me, sort of maybe pushing the incentive around like a housing opportunity zone. And maybe it's, you know, hey, if you go in there and you go with your, the, above our BMR unit, we'll give you even extra density as part of that, as a, as a trade-off. So we can work with the developers on that. But to me, how do we sort of promote housing over commercial development? And I think something like a special zone for that could be an opportunity.
Well, in particular, if I, if I can chime in there, because I was thinking about the exchange Al and I were having, and then something you said sort of crystallized it. I mean, they aren't necessarily perfect examples, but you look at, you look at what's been done in like Bay Meadows and Santana Row, okay? There's a, there's a different style of zoning or structuring. It basically is, Dave Crabbe taught me one time, the term, one term for it is the new urbanism, live, work, play, all, all in the same area. And actually, in practice, what I've been told is in Bay Meadows, and in fact, has accomplished that. There's a lot of people who work in the complex there, who live in the complex in a different part of it. And that, to me, implies that whether it's through overlay or rezoning or what have you, and I'm, I'm hand-waving over how complicated some of that may be from a general plan amendment point of view, that there is probably a way of doing something like that, okay? And, and, you know, in very, very broad terms, Jeff, Jeff, you know, told the prior council several times, one of the things that's happened in San Carlos is we've been discovered, okay? We've been discovered by a lot of potential investors. That's why there are people that want to develop 2 million square feet of office space in town. With that much potential value in play, maybe there's a way of, of taking some of that economic energy and directing it so that we also make sure that more housing gets built. You know, to, you know, we talk about linkage fees, and I think the linkage fees are great. I'm almost wondering if we should make even tighter linkages. You know, it's, it's kind of like the, as I said, the Bay Meadows project, where they built both types of structures.
I offer just part of the discussion, Mr. Chairman. So one of the, the concepts, and we, the city planners throughout the Bay Area have been discussing this as well. And, and so one of the ideas about our communities throughout the Bay Area with SB 50 is on the forefront and everything when we're having those discussions, is each community has a character and a soul, right? And so the question that the planning directors are posing to our group is, how do we keep our character in our soul as our, whatever that is for each of our communities? And so, and I think that was when we put together the general plan, there was a very thoughtful consideration of, well, how much supply or population are we willing to or want to put into our community? And if, you know, if you want to do a master plan for another part of the city and do a new neighborhood, that is something that the, the city could do. But at that time, back in 2009, it was decided we wanted to maintain this village idea. And that was the word. And that was the word, the village concept came up many times in the discussion. So in, with regard to that, this community, as we've seen from the numbers, there's two kind of things happening at the same time. One, how much supply, you know, do, are, would you accept as a community, as a council? And then we talk a lot about workforce housing, so there's sort of a dual discussion and they're kind of getting a little bit muddy in terms of, well, are we talking about housing all those jobs in our community? Or are we just talking about, hey, we have a lot of constraints with regard to the creation of workforce housing? How do we increase, rapidly increase the number of affordable housing or essential housing units in our community and kind of keep supply over here? Because we know we're going to add 3,400 in population and 1,500 units. So those are some of the things that are being balanced in the discussion, not just in our community, but throughout the Bay Area.
You know, the, I think Dave Crab in his comments tonight sort of pointed it out, though, when you think about it, we're potentially faced with at least 6,000 new jobs coming in. And you and I both know, depending on what the economy is like and what the council ends up setting the rules to be, that number could be higher than that. That's not, that's not sort of the outer edge of what could be built. And right now, we are reasonably close in terms of the jobs housing balance and have been for a while. That would radically throw it off. And by the way, just to be clear, I'm not standing here saying, well, if we're, I want to do 6,000 new jobs and I want to do 6,000 new households, because I'm not sure how that would work. But, but I, you know, that's actually part of the reason why I was intrigued by the idea of, this has to be a fairly deep community conversation. I think Laurel last time said, we really need to have a deep community conversation about this. That may mean that we have to amend some portion of the general plan. And that's how we're going to tell that we need to do that, okay? But to make all that work and to make it be viable, I guess is the right word, I really don't see how we can't not have some kind of moratorium on major, at least major commercial development, because otherwise the community conversation will be sort of pointless and we'll have a conversation and decide what to do and then we'll say, well, that's nice, but the plans have already been submitted for half of the new construction. And that's the point of the moratorium. It's not to say we don't want development, it's just to say, whoa, 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 this is growing much faster than nine years ago we thought it was going to. Let's take a pause and think about what direction we really want to go in. I'm looking at you as I'm saying this, but that comment's really addressed to the dais because it's not up to you and I to decide what we do about that, it's up to a majority of the council. But I hope when we come to talk about that, that we'll seriously consider that, because I would like to see that in-depth community discussion. I think we've gotten some good, good feedback on doing things like that already this year with the new council and its paid dividends. This is admittedly a much bigger thing, but why not use the same model and give ourselves the time to have the reasonable discussion, figure out what we're going to do on a policy level?
Can I follow up on that?
Sure.
So Al, a lot of discussion about that, several speakers brought it up. What does it involve? What does it mean? If we did do that, what's the, what's the, you know, there's, there's an impact to that, right?
Yes. So.
Who's affected?
Greg, you want to talk about the legal component of that?
This is just a little refresher about moratoria and urgency ordinances. The urgency ordinance are provided in the government code as a, like a alternate zoning tool that cities have to provide, as was suggested, time to study an issue that is foreseeable or out there that the city wants to study. And moratoria is one of the ways to do it, and urgency ordinance is another way to do it. And urgency ordinance is a temporary ordinance during the time while you're studying. I'm hearing a little bit of that, that might be something the council's interested in, whereas a moratorium just stops everything. So it's, it's kind of a different animal. You have to make, in order to do an urgency ordinance or a moratorium, very specific fact-based findings need to be made, that there's a current and immediate threat to the public health, safety or welfare. We've made those findings before in the zoning context, that's what it's all about. It's usually been in a situation where we are facing something imminent. It's, but, and I'm, I really am not aware of cities that kind of in a, kind of in a, using it as a planning tool when there's not something that's pending that they're concerned about, that they need to study. But it's certainly something we could look at to see if there's a way we could make those types of findings, because it's not, it's a tool that's available to you, it's just not a tool that's commonly used in a way that's for the, for a long-term planning process. That's the general plan process in my mind. And, you know, if there's a, I mean, these developments take a long time to process if, for commercial developments, so you may have more time than you think anyway, even if, even if tomorrow we got an application, because vested rights don't come into play until someone actually has their development rights. And you have a lot of tools to deal with development rights under our current code. But if that's something you want to bring back to us, we'd have to study and then figure out how we could make that finding and how we could structure it in a way that, is it going to be a moratorium, which is what was suggested, or is it going to be an urgency ordinance that puts in some sort of temporary zoning standard that allows you some flexibility?
I'm not necessarily opposed to either one of them. My concern is the unintended consequences. It just, gosh, it sounds like a great idea, let's just kind of push the pause button and let's have this, this discussion. But there are real world consequences to that. There are, there are projects in advanced stages of planning, there are projects under construction, which I would assume would be exempt from that. But I just worry about the, you know, those unintended consequences, what happens? And I think those are, if we're going to have that discussion, then I need to know, you know, what are the potential outcomes?
May I jump in for a second on that?
Yeah.
It sounds to me like, well, we'll come back to whether the council would like Greg, take Greg up on his offer to study this. Certainly I would like to, but, but we'll, have to have a few more people than that. But it may be wrong that what we also have to have is a discussion with Greg that's potentially a closed session item to look at some of the legal risks here, because I think that's not the entire universe of consequences, but that's, that's one of the big parts of the consequences, is what might we be exposing ourselves to in that regard.
All right. I just had a couple more items I wanted to ask about. You mentioned this idea of eliminating density. Can you elaborate on that a little bit?
So it would be a concept where you would not put a cap on the number of units that you could build, but you would put a framework in place to say, we only want buildings to be X number of feet. And so your massing is in place. So that way, you keep your community character, your transitions between single family and bigger, higher buildings. You could design it in such a way as you maintain those, the transitions between, you know, single family and bigger buildings and things like that. But you would just say, you wouldn't put a limit on it. You might put a minimum density in addition to that. That's more of a form-based approach, they call it, where your form is important because you want to maintain your village feel or your, you know, sense of pedestrian scale, as they call it. So you may want to maintain certain, you know, things like that in your built environment, but you could do that. You could just say, hey, you can build as many houses as you want, as long as you build, for instance, at least 20 dwelling units to the acre, triggering BMR and things like that.
All right. So that, it sort of changes my question, because I was saying, why don't we, I think the zoning on El Camino is four stories currently.
That's correct.
And to, maybe I'll, I probably am not very, going to be very popular by making this comment, but I'll allow, change the zoning to say five stories. But with this form-based concept that you're talking, eliminating the density, that might not necessarily be the way to go. It might not be necessary.
No, it might not. It's one approach, but it's been used by other communities, I think, or other communities are starting to consider that idea. So it's something that, you know, we can point to as an example.
All right. And then the last question I have is, that's been concerning me, is that we're talking about making all these changes. And I'm wondering, are we getting so far out ahead of SB 50 that, what if it passes and, you know, we've gone in a completely different direction? What happens then?
That's an excellent question. I guess the point is, I guess you could say you spent all this time and resources on something that kind of didn't, you know, ends up maybe not being implemented. You may have the data and the information that you gather from that study. So it's, it's kind of, it's uncertain as to what would happen, but that's one consequence.
Because we could spend a lot of time, a lot of money, and then it turns out to have been a waste.
Yeah.
So I just offer that to my associates up here to think about.
That is, I agree that that's definitely part of the pot odds that you'd have to evaluate in making that kind of decision. On the other hand, if we think it's really important and we don't spend the money and SB 50 doesn't come in, then we're like, gee, we just lost several years and a whole bunch of people whose lives we might have improved that we didn't bother to improve. If I can return just to a narrower topic that we, several people have brought up, both on the dais and from the floor with public comment, cash in lieu. I know Sarah had made the comment at the, at the last meeting, I don't know what words in your mouth, there was like, why don't we eliminate it? And I really liked that idea. You, or somebody made the point of, well, okay, if the BMR ratio is some factor, when you get down to a small enough development, you can't build a fraction of an apartment, so, so what do you do? So maybe there's some nuances where there's still some cash in lieu, but it's not an option, it's just that it's a fractional apartment or fractional household. How, what's involved and what are the consequences, pro and con, to us of doing something like that?
So you could do that as part of your below market rate ordinance update and review, so it is within your authority to make that kind of a decision. So we would bring that forward and we would talk to the development community about some of the impacts of that. But that would, and in fact, we're pushing developers to put in those units, to build those units, and we're on pretty good legal footing to do that now, but it's not in our ordinance. So it would give us additional authority to push for that. I think it's a very viable option. The only concern, I guess, would be is, if you make them build it, would that put a cooling effect on the housing market by not giving, you know, somebody an option if they're in dire straits? We don't know that, the answer to that question, but that's a potential. One of the things that we have seen is, for instance, if you increase the number from 15 to 20, we've seen that that is, from a market standpoint, seems to be too high. And other communities who have done that are starting to back down to 15%. Actually, we have pretty strong, you know, by seeing 15%, anything over seven, we're actually ahead of many, many, many cities in the county in the Bay Area.
Okay. Let me just sort of pull the dais here, because part of what we're doing here is seeing what, if any, action item, we don't, this is not an action item, but what we want to bring back in the future. I certainly would like to see staff bring back a discussion and a proposal to, in simple terms, eliminate cash in lieu. I think, Sarah, you had indicated support for that. That makes two of us, which I guess technically makes three, okay?
Yeah, can I just, I mean, I think from my perspective, I think definitely that's something to look at, but there's also the bigger issue too. Is that the only thing, for example, that's going to help us get to deeper levels of affordability and to hit those numbers? So that's, that's my question. I'm.
You know what? And I can't answer it because, answer your question, except to say that, at least for me, that is not, I don't view that as like, well, let's declare success and move on, okay? So there's a whole bunch of other things we need to talk about. This was just sort of a simple target of opportunity that some people had mentioned that I wanted to sort of take out of the discussion and say, bring it back as an action item, but not to try and forestall any other discussion tonight.
Yes, to, I think through the chair, to answer your question, there are other constraints, not just what we just talked about. There's other constraints to afford, the creation of affordable housing. It comes down to cost and timing. Cost, i.e. parking, is a huge cost for these developers. We did reduce our parking requirements for affordable housing, as you may have seen in the answers to your questions there. Could we reduce that further as you get closer to transit and things like that? There are, so there are other constraints. That's a big one, is the parking regulations. Fees are another big one. You know, should we look at our fees? Do we charge too much for developments that are, want to put in affordable housing or build to lower levels of affordability?
May I, in, just a quick, in that regard, Al, is there, and this is sort of a Greg question too, is there a way that we could either encourage or require for essential housing, some kind of contractual enforcement on the limitation of the number of cars per household? In other words, that, I'm almost thinking maybe in the context of, like, teacher housing or something, is that you agree that in order to apply to this program, that you will never own more than one car, okay? Or you will never seek to park more than one car on site and whatnot. But basically, the whole point of it is not to punish people and not allow them to have cars, it's to reduce the amount of parking space that we need to provide, because it is so expensive on the development side. Is there any basis to do anything like that?
I think we could look at that, I mean, I'm thinking contractually, you know, a lot of private landlords and, and other projects do have the ability to put limits as a condition of a tenancy, for example. So there might be some ways we could look at rental, rental projects. But the problem you have is, it's a pretty obvious one, is, you know, if they're not on the project and they're on the street and they're legally parked, we're having to use the vehicle of the lease to enforce somebody who has an extra car, for example. It gets to be an enforcement issue, but it, I mean, from a strict contract standpoint, I think you probably could do that. We should, we'll look at that for you and see if there's any cities that have been doing that.
Yeah, I would be interested in seeing more information about that. And it occurs to me that it might work easier in a place like San Francisco, where they basically have highly regulated neighborhood parking. You know, it's just, it's almost like our East Side parking program, but throughout the entire city. So if you have an extra car, you have no place to put it, so you have, you don't buy it to start with.
And just, there's one other thought, I was, I was, an email treatise was sent to me from a statewide law firm that talked about a new law, a change in the SEQA guidelines for traffic. And so that's one of the things I think we might bring back to you, just to talk about how, that's one of the ways the state's trying to encourage housing near, near transportation and, and help mitigate traffic impacts, but also encouraging the building of affordable housing near the, near transit hubs.
I had another thing I wanted to bring up, if I can jump in. Al, I'm going to call it a revolving fund, but what it's really driven by is, you of course recall what the city ended up doing to enable the construction of the Marriott Hotel, where we basically stepped in to arbitrage a timing situation. We bought the property from the former private property owners with the intention, expressed intention of selling it to some hotel developer, which we ended up doing. And so we deployed temporarily a bunch of city capital to do that. Do, do other communities do that in the narrower context of trying to build housing, particularly housing that might have more than the statutory requirement, BMR component to it, where the city would go out and seek to buy property from private owners, not to, not to build the projects itself, but to basically turn around and sell it to somebody? Because once we own it and are selling it, my understanding is like we did with the hotel property, we can put more conditions on it because we're a property owner. We just won't sell it to you if you don't agree to do certain things.
Yes, that is a possibility, cities do do it. Typically, it's the larger metropolitan cities, San Francisco, Oakland, Los Angeles. However, more smaller and mid-sized cities are starting to look at these ideas. We're actually out on the forefront, I think, of, in the county and maybe even in the region for a small community to get into the business of creating affordable housing. But yes, it's an effective tool, because land cost is one of the. But yes, it's an effective tool because land cost is one of the biggest hurdles for the creation of new housing. It's just super high here in the Bay Area and in our downtown and that. So yes, that's an effective tool that we could take a closer look at. And that's something that you would be using your commercial link, that you could use your commercial linkage fees for, is to acquire land and then set it up for below-market rate housing.
If we were to, if we were to ask staff to develop a list of potential properties that might be useful, multifamily housing sites in the city, is that something that you could reasonably do, I mean, you could do in a reasonably quick period of time? Or is that like a major project? Or maybe you've done it already and you have an inventory someplace?
Yeah, we can do, put that together very quickly for you. And we've done some work on that. I can tell you that there are a good many properties in highly desirable areas close to transit in our community that would be outstanding housing sites that are way underdeveloped. So there are, there's a lot of low-hanging fruit in that area.
I would just add, I think we have to point out a distinction between something like the Landmark Hotel site and affordable housing. I think we might be able to envision a project that might work very much like the Landmark Hotel site for market-rate housing, that had a 15% affordable component in it. But for anything beyond that, we're already seeing with projects where we already own the property, that we're not only having to give the property to a developer, but also put in millions of dollars to get a fully affordable and extremely low project built. So while we could do that with the money, it wouldn't be a situation where it would be coming back to us. It would be a one-and-done type project.
Which is certainly possible, but that's different from what I was describing as revolving. So let me make sure I understand. So that, I think what you were just telling me is something, it's reiterating what Al said a few minutes ago, that 15% affordable number is, in current conditions, seems to be roughly where the limit is. If you go beyond that, you're basically, you're making the investment into that.
Right. It becomes an increasingly large subsidy, which we can do, like I say, but then that becomes an only once project as opposed to revolving, as you set it up.
Well, I'm not trying to drive the future agendas here, but I personally wouldn't mind having staff put that kind of list together and bring it back to us so we could, we could look at it, think about it. But is anybody else interested in seeing that? I mean, it doesn't commit us to do anything, it just sort of highlights what might be possible.
Yeah, I'm happy to entertain that. And again, I think there's lots of great ideas that have been forwarded by staff as well as council. And I think it would be, I'd be very curious to kind of hear back from staff in terms of, you know, what do you think are the steps that we can take to, you know, get to where we need to get, you know, by 2023 with deep levels of affordability? Because it seems to me it's going to be a range of options.
In regards to that and the other items that have been mentioned and any more that I'm sure are mentioned here forthcoming, I think we'd like to work with the Housing Subcommittee to do exactly that and vet the information, make sure we're on the right track and bring forward, you know, the information that's being requested tonight in the context of sort of a complete package of recommendations where we feel like you'd get the most bang for your buck, as we're really starting to get a greater sense of where the council is on this particular issue.
Sure. I had one more question. I was reading an article in Chronicle yesterday about ADUs in the Bay Area. And apparently in San Francisco, Mayor Breed had, I believe, I'm trying to think of the word, not necessarily offered or ordered or requested that some of the fees that you were mentioning be eliminated for ADUs. Did you read, is that what you read in the article or did you read?
I did.
You did? All right. Am I not remembering that right? As I remember, she was proposing eliminating some fees. I don't know if it was ADUs or just BMRs in general. Do you recall?
I think it was ADUs.
It was ADUs. Okay. So along those lines, and I realize we have some limitations on ADUs in this town, just because we have a lot of small lot sizes. But is that another carrot? And we haven't talked, I mean, we've kind of been talking around the issue. And, you know, Jeff mentioned something about SB 50 being too much stick and not enough carrot. I don't want us to fall into that. I want, I think we all want more incentives. So do you think that eliminating or lowering fees on certain kinds of residential projects is a viable means of accelerating the process?
Yes. Yeah, definitely. And in particular with ADUs, because you're talking about, most of the time, it's a single-family residential property owner with a mortgage and property taxes. And ADUs can cost up to $150,000 to $200,000 when all is said and done for construction costs and fees and permits and everything. So any help that you can give the ADU market, you're giving help to those citizens in your community that want to do that. And it might be the difference in, you know, when they do their cost analysis, in doing it or not.
But then I worry that if we lower fees, we get more applications, we have a staff that's pretty, that's already pretty impacted. I mean, are we going to be looking at requests to add more staff six months down the road?
Well, I mean, that's a possibility. But right now, I think we could, we could do it and we're, you know, we'll take a look at our staffing levels in a year when we go to the next budget cycle and we'll see where we are. But just putting, implementing these things, we would, we could do those things.
So maybe that's something that the Housing Subcommittee could also hear more about.
Actually, well, if I may interject, what I was going to, because I'm trying to keep sort of a short list here. Why is that not something that we could ask to be brought back specifically at a future agenda, as a future agenda item? In other words, sorry, what would be involved with lowering the fees associated with creating ADUs? Is that a topic that if we handed that to you, you could come back with?
Yeah, I think we could. Sure.
Ron, do you want to suggest that? Or Adam?
Sure. Well, I had, I was going to try to wrap up things and get away from questions and talk about sort of the few things that I think I want to include. But one of them is on the ADUs. The other piece, I think, I'll start with that, just on the ADUs, is with the new housing, with the new FAR that we put in place, I do think that's going to impact people wanting to build ADUs. And so I think we need to look at that as part of the whole process, as well as the fees, either exempting all of it or a certain percentage or square footage of ADUs as part of the new zoning for single-family housing. So that would be one piece as part of that overall ADU number. And I had three other topics that I can wait or...
Let me just ask, and you were anticipating what I'm doing, I'm sort of trying to move us towards, this is a long-term discussion, but for tonight, perhaps summarize. So I don't have a problem with asking the Housing Subcommittee to talk about making changes to ADU fees and talking about the interaction I've had in there. But on the other hand, if staff is able to bring it back, I'd at least, I'd be happy to just discuss it and if we can act on it, act on it.
Can I build on that really quick?
Sure.
I wanted to start off by saying thank you for doing all of these awesome answers. I feel like there's a lot of overlap in our questions and the things that we brought up. So building on what you just said, Mark, I think that there's kind of a lot of low-hanging fruit that perhaps we could start working on immediately. So like the fees, I'm interested in waiving fees for 100% affordable housing projects in general. I think that's something, we could also look at timing. Two of those things were brought up in these great answers. So yeah, I just, I think that if staff could come back with the low-hanging fruit that maybe we could make decisions on, I think that would be really productive.
But Mark, to get back to your question, unless I hear differently, I still think the whole issue of fees is something that we ought to vet through the Housing Subcommittee first before we put it on an agenda. I mean, that's my personal feeling.
Why don't, would you be willing to accept something like this? Why don't we have the Housing Committee Subcommittee work on it with the goal being, whatever comes out of that, bring it back to the council?
Oh, absolutely.
Even if, even if you decide that we don't think this is going to work because, okay.
Absolutely.
And Sarah, as regards your suggestion or thought about waiving fees associated with affordable housing projects, I've thought about that one, but it's certainly a low-hanging fruit. Al, comments, feedback on that? Or Jeff, too?
A little more complicated. Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. A little more complicated, but certainly we could do the analysis on that. It may take just a little longer than it would just for ADUs. We, one of the questions for minor changes is, we anticipate bringing in ADU ordinance update to the city council in the near future, and maybe we could bring the fees along with that. If you want to put it in front, we can do that, too. For the whole BMR market, it's just a bigger, I think it's just a little more work, but we can certainly look at that as part of our workload. Yeah.
I know you like it since it's your idea. I'm happy to support it as well. Does anybody have any major objections to putting that in the queue?
I kind of think we should, I mean, we have so many different ideas floating, let's just have it go to the Housing Subcommittee, work with Al and others to try to come back with some ideas around this. I think we're, I don't know if we need to, for me, it's like, I don't need to go every single one and say, should we have further discussion about X and then NY and Z on this topic?
I'd prefer to, you know, get a general outline in the Subcommittee to know what we're looking at. And then that also, you can get some feedback from us and maybe we can get a sense of how long it's going to take and how much work it's going to take and what's involved. And then we could sort of bring that back and you can help us prioritize that in the long-term planning because we've bitten off so much here. We're trying to do so much that I'm afraid that we're going to get to a point where we've got so many things that we're trying to accomplish that we can't figure out which one to do first.
Well, if I may counter that, I was viewing most of the things we were talking about here as relatively quick, one-and-done things, which in a sense are precisely not the things that, in my mind, you need to vet through a Subcommittee. Subcommittee stuff is for when things are more subtle, there's a lot of interactions. I know there's interactions on anything that we do, but, you know, and I'm not saying people are trying to do this, but one of the fears I have is whenever we try to make forward progress on a topic, even if we take even the low-hanging fruit and we say, well, we have to study them to death before we decide, then all of a sudden, people go, how come there's no fruit in the basket? And it's admittedly a judgment call, you know, about some of this. That's why, to me, the cash, eliminating cash-in lieu was relatively straightforward. I mean, I'm not saying the council's going to approve it, but the idea itself is relatively simple. Property inventory, relatively simple. You know, some of these other things start getting a little more complicated. Where do you draw the line on it? I personally think the idea of when staff is planning on bringing back the ADU work anyway to incorporate some of these other issues about how to reduce fees, that would sound like a good, a good time to do that. But there, too, personally, I lean against running it through the Housing Subcommittee because I'm not sure that it's that involved.
Sure. Could we maybe spend a couple minutes, just have people throw at all their ideas?
Sure.
And then maybe, Mark, you can just take the four or five you think are quick hits and we can just get a quick yes or no on moving forward quickly with those?
I have my piece of paper ready. Why don't you start?
All right. So ADU is one. I like the idea of going a little bit, looking at both minimum density and maybe increasing density overall would be another one. I know that might take a little, that's a little more work. I do like the idea of some sort of special overlay zone for housing with some incentives. And then I do also like the idea of looking at the BMR ordinance and, one, putting a minimum in, whether it's based on square footage, so we get away from, you're building six units and you build six 3,000-square-foot units. If you hit a certain threshold, then you're going to have to put one in. I get you want to, you know, someone's doing, you know, 3,000 square feet, that might be a different story versus somebody who's doing 15,000 or 20,000 and trying to get around the BMR ordinance. So I think those are the, kind of the main things I'd like to see is kind of BMR, density, ADUs, and then maybe a special zone for housing.
Okay. Ron?
I'm going to pass for the moment, so.
Okay. Sarah?
Pressure. I agree with Adam. ADUs is on my list. The BMR in Lufi is obviously on my list. I'd like to take a look at waiving fees. I'd look, I'd like to take a look at expediting review process. The density, I appreciated that chart, Al, that was really helpful. I thought that was something maybe in the medium term that we look at. And then I guess on my long-term list is the overlay zone. And also trying to figure out some kind of nexus between commercial development and using those commercial, the commercial linkage fees to actually build housing.
Okay. Laura?
Yeah, I'm going to go back to my previous proposal. I would be in favor of any approach and task that would enable us to get to deeper levels of affordability, ensure that we hit all of the units within that plan quickly, efficiently, and ensure that we maintain the quality of our life here in San Carlos. So let's stick to the higher level objective and let the experts inform our thinking, and my thinking. Thank you.
Okay. Ron, are you ready?
No, I endorse all those. Plus, the only other thing I wanted to add was looking at reducing parking requirements around, you know, the development areas that are close to transit. I don't know if anybody else brought that up. Did you? Adam?
I meant to say special zone near transit.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you for that reminder.
Okay.
I always hear everything.
I won't repeat all of the ones that other people have mentioned. The only one that I would like to see included is that property inventory thing that I had mentioned before. So I wrote down everything people talked about. Here's just my thoughts on how this might go forward. And I'm thinking about what we could reasonably ask staff to bring back to us, bring back to the council directly. Those are sort of the easy, quick, one-and-dones versus anything that requires more time and thinking. I agree that those I would route through the Housing Subcommittee. Okay? So just in no particular order, the property inventory, I think you said that's pretty straightforward, so I just have that come back to us. It's mostly informational at that point, anyway. Eliminating the in-lufis for BMR, I think that's also pretty straightforward, from what I heard staff say. So that I could see coming back directly. The, the rest of them, the ADU-related items, of which there were several, I think, Al, when is the ADU policy expected to come back?
I think we can do it this summer.
The things that people are talking about tonight, ADUs and the concept of increasing the availability of housing, can that be factored into what you're doing or is that going to require more careful thought?
Could you rephrase that? I'm not sure how the, more housing versus ADUs. ADUs...
I was presuming that the ADU issue or ADU item you were going to bring back to the council was fairly broad, whereas the things we were talking about here tonight were how to tweak ADU policy and fees and whatnot so that more of it gets built, which is sort of a subset of that. So I'm asking whether or not that can be shoehorned into what you were planning on bringing back anyway, or whether or not we ought to push it to the Housing Subcommittee and have them work on it.
I think ADU should go through, I mean, we'd like it to go through the Housing Subcommittee to have some guidance and to bounce some ideas. I think we could do all ADU-related discussions, fees, you know, how to take away constraints for ADUs in that discussion. So anything, any of those questions about ADUs, we can have that all as part of one discussion.
All right. By the way, Adam also had a suggestion about tweaking the rules involving BMRs to make sure that people, I wrote it down, as people don't have easy avenues of getting around them. I was assuming that could be incorporated in the item of bringing back, eliminating the cash-in lieu. It's a relatively focused thing. So what's your reaction to that?
If you want us to do that one thing, we could certainly bring that back. But in terms of the entire BMR ordinance, we were going to do that as well. So...
So you're thinking that might be through the Housing Subcommittee?
Yes, it's below-market rate housing. We, again, we would like to be able to bounce some ideas and get some guidance. So we could do those things together, I think, maybe by... So we could do those things together, I think, maybe by next, you know, the BMR thing might take a little bit longer than the ADU study, but we can do it before the end of the year.
Okay. It looks to me, without reiterating every item on the list, it looks to me like most of the rest of them actually probably go through the Housing Subcommittee in the context of what would be involved in doing that. I presume people would probably be okay with that? Okay. Yeah, I have to admit, I'm personally a little hesitant just because, well, it feeds into the next question I was going to raise. So we'll leave it at that. So we've got two items that basically come back more directly to the council and the rest of them will go through the Housing Subcommittee. The last thing I want to bring us back to, just decide, or at least for tonight, decide whether we're going to do anything about is this notion of a more in-depth community discussion and its linkage and what degree of linkage we want to have with the notion of having either an urgency ordinance or a moratorium, which would require, Greg, as he pointed out, to do some research for us. My sense was from the discussion, there seemed to be general support for the idea that this topic in particular, we need to have an in-depth community discussion, which involves staff doing a number of things, right, in terms of outreach, like with the wildfire stuff?
Well, I mean, I think before we commit ourselves to that, we'd want to understand, this is something I, we, that just came up today, and in talking to the staff, there's nobody on the city staff that's familiar with this type of concept and use of a moratorium. And so I would think that before the council would want to commit to engaging the public on this particular topic, we'd want to first inform the council as to, you know, what are the realities around it, because we simply don't know.
All right. Well, why don't we, let me see if I can propose this if the DIAS goes along with it. Why don't we task staff to come back with the analysis that Greg said that he could do for us and the one that Jeff basically just talked about, which is what would the implications be? And bring that back directly to the council relatively near term to have some discussion to decide what, if we want to go in that direction, what's involved? People okay with that? Alternative thoughts?
Would this just be a report from Greg, basically?
There might be two pieces to it.
I think it would be a bit of a research project. You know, we wouldn't go beyond that. We just want to understand, you know, has this ever been done? How did it work? What were the specifics? What are the legal implications, if any, associated? I mean, we just want to be able to provide you with professional advice and guidance. And, you know, we simply aren't equipped right now to do that on that particular topic. It's an intriguing idea, but beyond that, I just don't, I don't know what the implications could be. So, you know, we need some time to do some research. It's not, that's not an overly daunting task to answer those questions. It may lead to a much bigger task, but, you know, researching it isn't...
Yeah, I agree. I think we need to find that out. You know, I need to, I need to know the implications.
Yeah, I agree. No, no, okay, so you're actually supporting the idea of asking, okay. And I was also going to say that it's possible that part of what Greg's going to bring back is you may want to talk to us in closed session, too, about some of the specific legal risks that we might be facing.
That element would be important. And then I did hear in your earlier discussion, talking about if we can identify some potential unintended consequences that you want us to, just from a policy side, to kind of give you a heads up on.
Right.
Is that, anybody have any major objections to that?
I think we need to understand.
Yeah, clearly, clearly need to understand. Okay. Any final comments or observations?
Mr. Chairman, may I just, really quick, to summarize what we heard, there are some nearer-term items that you'd like us to explore. One is the BMR ordinance and its fees, ADUs and its fees, an analysis of opportunities, development opportunity sites. So those are some of the things that I can, that we can bring forward in the next few months. Some of the issues that you discussed, like overlay zones and special zones and density, those are things that actually we anticipated coming forward in the strategic objective that you approved earlier this evening. And in your retreat earlier this year, you, there was some discussion of these types of areas. So we outlined sort of the work program for that. That is a longer-term work program. We will need to hire consultant assistants for those things, and I just wanted to make that known.
Thank you. I appreciate you reminding us of that. And thank you and your staff for all the work they've done on this. I mean, several people have alluded to this, but answering all those questions as well as you did is impressive.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was a daunting task, so, most appreciative.
Can we take a short break now?
I was just going to say that. So we'll take an Adam Rec sponsored break. We'll reconvene at 9:20. Lots. Clean up? There we go. All right. If my colleagues will indulge me, I'd actually like to take one of the consent calendar items now as opposed to later in the meeting. We do tend to have some flexibility about when we actually handle those, when we pull them. And the specific item is item 8C, which is adopting a resolution approving the Chilton Park master plan, which, as I recall, Adam, you had asked to have pulled off of the consent calendar.
Just, and I think partially, part of this is sort of not having been part of the process with the Chilton Park. For me, I would have, it was on consent, I didn't really have a chance to get a presentation from Parks and Rec and maybe hear from the Park and Rec Commission about the issue. And so I didn't want it to be on the consent calendar. I'd prefer to have a presentation and a little bit of a discussion so I understand better what the project is and be able to understand that a little more and hear more from the community on that versus just having it as a consent item.
Fair enough. No, those are all valid reasons for pulling something off the consent calendar. Jeff, is there a presentation from staff about this? I see Amy approaching the microphone. Good evening, Amy.
Good evening, Chair Olbert and members of the council. So I'll go through a presentation. Our consultants, calendar associates, would have been here this evening, but I would be happy to go through the process, what's been entailed the last six months or so, with quite an positive and good outturn of support from residents who are also here this evening. So let me start. The process started in October with our first community meeting. There were roughly 25 members from the neighborhood that joined us at that first meeting to be a part of the project. No concepts for the proposed master plan were presented at that meeting. It was essentially a time to facilitate a discussion with nearby residents to hear what they wanted to see at this park site. Going back to the master plan for parks and recreation facilities, there was a recommendation to develop a park design for this site. And in 2017, city council did direct staff to conduct a master planning project. We held two meetings, so the first one in October that I mentioned, and then a follow-up meeting in December, where essentially two concepts were presented. As you see here, this is the site of Chilton Park with access from three streets, Chilton Avenue, Sequoia Court, and Bayview Drive. Here's some images of the site. As you can see, there are some close-by residents to the park property line. This is the popular eucalyptus tree that's on the site. And then also what all of the neighbors refer to as the rock, the boulder outcropping on the site, which is really the visual element that you see at this park when you step onto the grounds. So this is the first design alternative. It was a very passive approach with really some modifications to the trails, adding some landscaping, and there were, there was a natural play element, as you see there in the top image. And then here was a second design alternative, so a little more of an aggressive approach as to adding elements into the park site. A meadow you see towards the left, a picnic area, a spot for people to gather, just adjacent to the rock. And through this, these two alternatives were presented at that December community meeting. And so through feedback and comments from the neighbors and from the community that were a part of the process, we came up with the final design alternative, kind of balancing the park elements, the new park elements, with also keeping a very nature feel to the park and not too many improvements. A lot of the feedback we heard from the neighbors included keeping that nature feel of the park space, the need for improved pathways and trails, and also, though, the desire to maintain the characteristic of the park and to continuously place new land and to consciously place new landscaping where it will not disrupt the views of the surrounding homes. And so as you can see, some of the highlights of the proposed elements include an accessible upland trail. So if you're familiar with the park site, the topography is pretty challenging to gain an accessible scale path, but that upper left-hand quadrant does provide for an accessible path. There's some existing needle grass, grassland to remain, a native plant species. There is a top play element that's included, kind of towards that middle center path that goes from Chilton to Sequoia. On the lower end, the Bayview Drive entrance, that's kind of the steepest slope of the park site. And so the proposed plan will add steps to, just for improved access up to the park, some benches, and there's also a gathering space adjacent to the rock. And so it's still keeping that nature feel, but just providing a place. The feedback we heard was that's kind of the drawing point to the park for the kids that go there to hang out and play. And so to kind of focus some gathering area around there. There's also some habitat planting. And part of the feedback we heard at the commission meeting, which was held in February where this plan was presented, was to include a drinking fountain, to include interpretive sign panel identifying some of the native plant species, and also to increase the top play area. So there was kind of a more conservative proposed plan for the top play area, and the comments we received was either to kind of go with it and add some play elements or to scale it back. And so some of the proposed, there it is. So as you can see, here's some visuals of what the proposed plan talks about. So the stairs leading up from Bayview Drive, some park benches. Here's the entrance off of Chilton. So here's the proposed top play area, so keeping that nature feel but giving it kind of more of an active play element with some, a balance beam, climbing pyramid. Here's the gathering spot adjacent to the rock. As you can see, it's using some boulders, more natural elements to provide that. And so the next steps tonight would be to adopt the master plan, and then we do have a proposal for funding coming in the budget cycle in the next month or two. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Amy? Adam, go.
One quick kind of comment, two comments. Thank you, Amy. This was great. I appreciate that, and I appreciate all the feedback you got from the community. And I like the design. I think one thing would be interesting, I don't know maybe long-term and what the feedback would be on that, is, you know, if we can make the, somehow get access from Club Drive at some point to make it a walking path through, if there's a way to get that, work with the community to get so they have, more people can access this sort of new and improved park. I don't know if that's possible or not at some point, but I think it looks great, and thank you.
Comment, following up on that, and a quick question. Having lived right off the bottom right-hand corner of this picture in front of us, Adam, I think it's great to have that kind of direction and see if staff can come up with some way to tie it into Club Drive, but my recollection is that's a pretty steep drop-off through a bunch of private property.
I don't know about that one.
No, no, it's, no, the feedback is fine, because, just because it's steep doesn't mean there's not a way to do it. I'm just sort of pointing that out. One question I had, Amy, is whenever we create, or like in this case, make a park more attractive than it used to be, there's an impact on parking in the neighborhood, because particularly this park has no designated parking spaces for it. Is that something that came up in the community, the neighborhood discussions? And if so, are they okay with whatever the impact is likely to be?
It was a discussion and some voice concern about the possibility of increased use of the park site. And so it's deemed a neighborhood park, and the proposed improvements will keep it as a neighborhood park, which the goal of that is to provide a space for people to access it mostly by foot, which we heard a lot of comments that there are students in this neighborhood who use it as their route to school. It's a great walking path for people to just enjoy the path themselves or walk their dogs. And so that really was kind of, it's the goal of the plan is to continue to use it as a neighborhood park.
Okay. And, but it sounds like that concern is, was registered and people are okay with the concept of the master plan and whatever that impact might be. I think the master plan looks great. We'll have to talk about the financial impacts of it and how it slots in, but parking stuff, you know, always ends up being different. Any other questions for staff? If not, I don't have any speaker cards on this, but is there anybody from the public who would like to address the council? Please come up and address us, and if you wouldn't mind filling out a card and giving it to Crystal when you're done, I'd appreciate it.
You're done?
No, you can speak first. You can do it when you're done. I'm sorry, I spoke that too fast.
I appreciate it. Thank you. I live on 56 Bayview Drive, and there'll be trees blocking my views, and I'm wondering if the trail, since it's so close to the house, can be placed further, further down? Those are my concerns and the noise, if there'll be a noise factor, because it's so nice and private right now. We have side views of the house, and so if you place trees there, we won't have the views.
Okay. You're quite welcome. And again, if you'd please fill out a card to give to Crystal. Amy, would you like, Greg, Amy can respond to questions that are asked in this context, right? Okay.
That definitely was something that the consultants took into consideration, was looking at all of the adjacent properties. And as mentioned before, that was one of the concerns per se that the residents and the people who live in the homes that surround the park were concerned of, that any additional landscaping would block their views. And so that is taken into consideration, and that would be the specific trees and landscaping that would be planted would be in the design phase, and we would make sure to identify plants that wouldn't obstruct views.
Okay. Thank you for providing that information. Any further comments or questions?
I have a question for Amy. So in the design phase, does that go back to the Parks and Recreation Commission and the public is invited to come and speak or listen to where the trees would be planted and then give input there?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. And you have like an email list for the neighbors that you email out?
I have an email list, and then all of our projects, we notify surrounding neighbors within 300 feet of a project site. And then we also include information in our monthly newsletter, which goes out to roughly 4,000 email addresses. So...
Okay. So still opportunity for a public comment. Okay. Thank you.
I guess, just apropos of the comments and questions the speaker raised, for what it's worth, I, when you get to the design phase, I hope we're not necessarily utterly committed to even having trees in that particular area. Maybe there are other ways of, or other kinds of vegetation that could be put in, plants or whatnot, that would fit the bill in terms of trying to create the right kind of environment, but that might also be less obtrusive. I'm not saying that I would contingent, you know, make my vote on this contingent on it. I'm just saying I think it'd be a nice thing to do, to at least consider, if we can.
Thank you.
All right. All right.
Can I move to approve item 8C?
You certainly can. Is there a second?
Dr. Resolution. Actually, I had another comment also.
Okay, please, please come up again. Feel free to make your comment.
I'll make the card afterwards also.
That'd be great, thank you.
It's okay. Just a quick one for the gentleman. Chilton Avenue connects to Club, so you don't really need to create a path. They can actually just walk down the street and access the park. The one question I had, and I'm not sure I ever got an answer, is as far as accessibility for the handicapped for the park, I was always under the impression that you couldn't make a lot of improvements unless you had access for people that are less fortunate, and I don't see any place on the, the actual map that shows any access for somebody who's handicapped. And so if you have stairs like that, it's definitely going to preclude somebody who has a wheelchair or something like that from entering the park. And obviously, from a parking standpoint, the only two places you could do parking for somebody who's handicapped would be Chilton or Sequoia, and those are residential areas where you can't set aside a parking spot that would be wide enough for a van or something like that without being intrusive on somebody's property. So I'm just curious about, when you look at it from that aspect, has that been addressed?
Fair enough, thank you. Please do fill out a card. Amy, would you care to respond, please?
The city has gone through two different projects to, for this park site, let's say. So number one is the Parks Master Plan, and there are two items addressed in the Parks Master Plan that regard accessibility. So the two, and then there's also the ADA Transition Plan, which was a citywide project that went around to all the different facilities and parks and identified items where the city needed to make any accessible upgrades when doing a project. Two things that were identified were the pathways, and so we have, as mentioned before, the pathway from Chilton to Sequoia, and the loop that goes to the left, which is to the west, is accessible, of accessible grade and width. The other item that was mentioned was seating area, and so within that path, we do have seating available for someone if they were to come with a walker, in a wheelchair, that they can have seating area.
And so I take it from, from your answer that the fact that those adjustments or characterizations don't cover the entire park, we still meet the ADA requirement as involves parks. And then the other question that the gentleman had asked had to do with parking accessibility, and I'm not familiar enough with the ADA detail to know how that fits in. He was talking about vans and having to park on a residential street.
As a neighborhood park, we don't have any specified parking, there isn't any park parking for Chilton Park, and so therefore, we're not required to add any accessible parking to the site in the project.
Because there is no park, there is no park-specific parking. It's a neighborhood park. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from the DIAS, or Adam, if you wanted to continue your motion?
I move to approve item 8C, a resolution approving the Chilton Park Master Plan.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none, Crystal, would you call the roll, please?
Councilor McDowell? Yes. Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Councilmember Palmer-Lohan?
Yes.
All right, the item is approved. We will now move on to, if my colleagues would be willing to permit a little bit of additional adjustment, since I have one speaker card on one of the remaining items, I'd like to take that one first, which is item 10B, consideration of adopting a resolution approving a mitigated negative declaration and associated mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and introducing an ordinance amending the development standards contained in ordinance 1230 to allow modifications to the traffic signal for the Circle Star development. Good evening again, Al.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. This is a request by the owner of the property to adjust the timing or the direction of the stoplight that's out on that, on the road there, on Industrial Road, and Lisa Costa-Sanders, our principal planner, will present you with the project this evening.
Thank you, good evening. The item before you is a request to adopt and, excuse me, introduce an ordinance as well as a resolution adopting a mitigated negative declaration to amend the development standards to allow a modified traffic signal. Just as quickly for background, the Circle Star development site is 8.4 acres in area, and the majority of the site, 7.3 acres, is located in San Carlos with 1.1 acres located within Redwood City. The site was formerly occupied by the Circle Star Theater, known as the Theater in the Round, and that operated from the 1960s until it closed in 1994. The San Carlos City Council approved the current Circle Star development in 1997. That includes a little over 200,000 square foot office complex, 118-room extended stay hotel, a parking structure, and surface parking. The site is currently zone plan development, and the project development standards are contained within ordinance 1230. The development standards specifically restrict traffic from the project through to the adjacent residential neighborhood, and there's some details in that ordinance on the traffic signal. So before you this evening is just the traffic signal, there's no plans for any further development or changes to the improvements at the site. So the applicant requests an ordinance amendment to amend the development standards to allow a modified traffic signal. The proposal has been reviewed by the City of Redwood City Transportation and Planning Staff, as well as San Carlos Planning Staff and our Engineering Staff. The Planning Commission heard the item at its January 22nd meeting and recommends approval, as well the Transportation and Circulation Committee, Commission reviewed the proposal at its March 19th meeting and also recommends approval. This is the existing intersection configuration, consists of a four-legged signalized intersection that serves north and southbound Industrial Road, Circle Star Way at the eastern leg, and G Street at the western leg. So exiting or egress movements from Circle Star Way are currently restricted to right turn only, and you'll see that green median that really directs traffic to the right. Traffic is able to make all movements out of G Street, so with that signal intersection, they can turn right or left under Industrial, as well as traffic on Industrial can either turn left onto G Street or left into the Circle Star Way development. And this is the proposed modifications to the intersection. It would allow traffic exiting Circle Star Way to turn left onto southbound Industrial Road or right onto northbound. A new median that you see, the larger green in the street area there, would be constructed to restrict traffic exiting Circle Star Development from traveling straight through into the residential neighborhood. There would not be any restrictions on the access from G Street, so you can continue to exit G Street either going left or right, and all those left turn movements on Industrial would, would remain as well. So the ordinance, the recommendation before you is to modify the development standards of that ordinance to allow the modified traffic signal with left turns out of the development, and also add some language that gives the city the ability to make modifications in the future, consistent with the municipal code and state rules. The city did retain a consultant to prepare an initial study of mitigative negative declaration, and that found no significant environmental impacts resulting from the modified traffic signal. A full traffic analysis was completed by Farr and Pierce, and we have their staff available this evening. Right after my presentation, I'd like to just hand it over to Farr and Pierce so they can describe the traffic for you. It was also, that traffic study was peer-reviewed by the city's SEQA consultant, reviewed by Redwood City staff, as well as San Carlos staff. There is mitigation measures to reduce impacts, those are all during construction relating to air quality, biological and cultural resources. No impacts were identified relating to traffic. So the mitigated negative declaration was available from public review November through December. The document was available on the city's website, at City Hall, the library. We also placed a copy at the Redwood City Hall, as well as the Redwood City Library, and no comments were received during that SEQA public review period. The developer hosted two community meetings. I attended both of those, as well as Redwood City staff, and they were both well-attended by the residential neighborhood in Redwood City, and that conducted on March 28th, as well as August 22nd. The developer had initially proposed two different options for modifying the signal. One of them did allow traffic to go straight through to G Street, and after hearing concerns from that residential neighborhood, they dropped that option and modified the option that you had before you to really further restrict traffic from traveling through to G Street, enlarge that central median. They also, the neighborhood also asked several questions about different options, and one was to maybe move the traffic signal further south, opposite Garden Street, because Garden is not a through street, it's a dead-end street. Also researched the ability to exit the site onto Veterans Boulevard, researched cut-through traffic through the neighborhood. Alternate location for the traffic signal was evaluated and not deemed beneficial. It was noted that Caltrans would not permit a driveway into Veterans Boulevard due to proximity of the freeway off-ramp, and the traffic consultant found that cut-through traffic through the neighborhood was minimal, and I can have her expand that if you have any questions. Public noticing, we did our, expanded really our standard notifications. So typically, we do a 300-foot notification for this project. We did 500-foot and expanded it to that residential neighborhood in Redwood City. And the notice was also published in the newspaper. No comments have been received prior to the preparation of the report, and I guess just before the meeting, we did receive one comment from Kristen Polly. So this is the motion that you have before you. It's two actions. One is to approve the mitigated negative declaration, and the second is to introduce the ordinance amending the development standards.
Lisa or Greg, would those be voted on separately or together?
I think we have a separate resolution and the introduction, so that's how you would do it.
And if you don't mind, I'll have the traffic consultant speak now, and actually the, okay. So could you tee up the applicant's presentation? And the representative from the ownership is also here this evening, if you have any questions of him.
Thank you, Lisa.
Hi, I'm Amanda Heinecke from Farr and Pierce. I'm a senior transportation engineer with the firm. I am going to skip through this presentation and get to the traffic analysis, but of course, if you guys have any other questions, just let me know. So to remind you again, this is the location, and what we are proposing is to add an outbound left turn access from the property. Let's see, Lisa, I already went through all this. So here is the proposed design with the expanded median to prohibit through movements through to G Street. It would also be enhanced with signage that indicates for the outbound vehicles to only make a left or a right, that through movements are not permitted. And per community feedback, we also added, or the applicant also added sidewalks into the site, and another thing that will be added to the design per community feedback is a, an activated bicycle device in the pavement so that bicyclists can get out, as well as green pavement and a bicycle box. We can add that during later phases of design. So we conducted our traffic analysis. We studied both existing, existing plus project and background and a background plus project. The background indicates that approved projects and projects under construction were included in the traffic volumes that we studied. We studied the Circle Star Way and Industrial Road intersection, Industrial Way and Whipple, and then Whipple and Veterans. One of the key assumptions was that of all of the right turners currently making a right out of the site, about two-thirds of those would turn left out of the site, given the opportunity of the signal phase, and that since this site is primarily an office building, that a lot of the people here at the site are going to be commuters, that are going to be attracted to the 101 freeway during to-and-from commute peak hours. So all of those trips were, were allotted to basically go south on Industrial Way, make a southbound left onto Whipple, and continue on to the 101 freeway. It happens that the southbound left turn movement at Industrial Way and Whipple is a critical movement, so that putting all of our volumes on that southbound left is a conservative assumption. So when we found, when we, when we completed our LOS analysis, LOS meaning level of service, we found that with the project, there would be no impacts to any of the study intersections, and the delay would not degrade considerably at the study intersections. So that's sort of my, my summary of the, a traffic analysis that we did. If you guys have further questions, I can get into that, but I'd, I'd like to stop for them.
Laura.
How many office workers are we talking about are housed in this particular building, and what's, what's the volume at the end of the day? When you say two-thirds would opt to turn left out of there, what, what number of vehicles are you talking about? Do you happen to know?
Yeah, so currently in existing, there are about, sorry, there's about 34 a.m. outbound trips and 87 p.m. outbound trips, which, which did seem low to us, even though the building is fully occupied. So we also studied an adjusted scenario where we increased those outbound trips to be more consistent with a similar office use, and even with those adjusted volumes increased, we were not finding any impacts under the adjusted scenario as well.
Rod.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Amanda. The way it is now, I would assume that people coming out want to go north on, on, or they want to go south, excuse me, on 101, they can easily just go up to Britton and then get on the freeway that way. But if they go, if they want to go north, they've got to go all the way to Holly, or did you study whether or not they make U-turns just beyond the San Carlos line and then go back to Whipple? Is, is it possible to know that?
We, anecdotally, yes, we did observe some U-turns that would make a right out and then turn, make a U-turn to come south. So that was noticed. We didn't do an official count of those, but that is something that we know is happening.
And, and do you have a sense of how many people do that?
I'm not off the top.
Possible to know, yeah.
I mean, because we didn't, we don't have the count, I don't want to, you know, throw a number out there, that's not really accurate.
It happens.
Yeah, it happens.
Okay, thank you.
Adam.
Two questions. One, just on the SEQA study on the traffic. So I noticed the study itself was from 2016, that was in the SEQA study. So can you tell me about what adjustments you made to sort of look at today's traffic, particularly on Industrial, because, I mean, at least what I saw from the traffic mitigation and the SEQA study, it was mostly around Circle Star and Industrial there, but not the traffic necessarily on Industrial itself. So I'm just interested in understanding sort of how you, since that was not studied at all, where, you got the numbers to that to understand the mitigation and the impact?
So you're asking how we came up with the volumes on Industrial?
The volumes on Industrial, because unless I missed it in the SEQA report, I know it's like 100-something pages, I only saw in the traffic part that the study was on Circle Star Way at that intersection, and not, and traffic exiting and coming into Circle Star into the office complex, not the impact of Cincinnati and traffic, or the, how traffic has grown on Industrial, over the, since 2016.
Right, so we did study two other intersections in addition to the intersection at the site, so Industrial Way and Whipple, and also Veterans and Whipple. And we studied a background scenario, which means that we, we have a list of related projects, both in the City of San Carlos and the City of Redwood City, that we included those volumes, we layered those on top of our existing count volumes, so we could basically say, okay, with all these projects completed in the future, what would traffic look like even then? So we, we did study a future scenario and also found no impacts.
And can you talk about, because when you, with this project, if it's approved, you 'll have to add a light, right, coming from Circle Star Way? Make the left-hand turn, because right now, I'm assuming there's the light, right, because you can just make a right-hand turn.
I think it's currently like a signalized right-hand turn, I believe. No, there's nothing? Yeah.
So if there already is a signalized light, but would you, and would the time get adjusted to accommodate for the left-hand turns? Since you're saying now all this extra traffic is going to come through the left-hand side? And what kind of delays and impact does that have on the traffic going on Industrial?
Right, so there So there would be additional green time needed for the outbound traffic, but the two phases, eastbound and westbound, it would be permitted phasing, meaning that they would be able to go at the same, same time. The current green phase for G Street has about seven seconds of green time. With the addition of this phase, that would need to be increased to 11 seconds of green time. And then through our study, we also assumed that the signal would be optimized, the cycle lengths and the signal splits. So, and when we did that, we found that between existing and existing plus project, the delay increased experienced on average by all users at the intersection would not be enough to trigger impacts according to the city's criteria.
Great, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Appreciate it.
So I just had one sort of quick question. When, several times during the summary that you gave us, you talked about how the study showed no impact on Whipple. I presume what you mean is no impact in terms of the quality of service rankings, not that literally there was no impact on what was going on there?
Correct. It's according to the city's impact criteria itself. That's not to say that there wouldn't be some additional queuing or some additional delay, but just according to the impact standards.
And as I recall, Level D is not good, but not, I mean, it's not the lowest possible level of performance. Do we know how long that section of Whipple has been at Level D?
How long?
Is it a, that, I wouldn't, Amanda, just wondering if you know, that it, is it a relatively recent phenomenon, or has it been like that for a long time?
I don't happen to know that.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions from the dais? Then, thank you. We have a couple of public comments. So first from John Polly, followed by Jackie Gerlach. Welcome.
Thank you for letting me speak. So 22 years ago, I was actually at the meeting when we talked about allowing this building to be approved. And a couple of things that were, what happened at the time, I believe, we went from eight stories to four or five. And they promised us that the traffic would not be sent south, it would be funneled north. The reason, my biggest concern with the traffic being changed is they, and I appreciate all the work all you have done. I don't want to, I don't have the expertise to say whether or not it will be changed dramatically. However, if I leave my house, by the way, I live on E Street, I live in the Sentinel Park right there across the street, there are plenty of times at around 5:00 that you cannot make a left turn onto Whipple from Industrial. There are plenty of times when I've been out there where it takes a couple of lights to get through, because it's backed up and you get, inevitably cars stuck in the intersection. So what my concern then is, is that people are going to make the left turn and then cut through, cut up E Street, or cut up B, D, or C, or A, go up to Arguello, make a left on Arguello, make a left on, back onto Whipple, and they're going to cut through the neighborhoods to get around the traffic, because they can't make the left turn onto, onto Whipple. So I'm concerned for all the families that live there, the kids that are playing on the streets, quite frankly, from my street, because I'm the, ours is the only one without a stop sign on it, and I realize I'm going to have to now go to Redwood City probably and talk with them about that. But finally, not only do I ask that you don't allow this, and I apologize for not, my wife and I never did see any of the notifications ahead of time, but my final ask is that if you do something like this, you decide to do this, please go back and work really closely with Redwood City. And make sure that they reconfigure those lights, because they're going to need to be reconfigured, they're going to need to be retimed, they're just not working now as it is, and it's going to get worse. 87 cars makes a difference. So thank you for listening.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Jackie Gerlach.
Great, thank you so much for giving me the chance to talk. I know it's been a very late shift for you all, so thank you.
We always work.
But I'm just speaking on behalf of Upstart's employees regarding the proposal to alter the intersection at Circle Star Way and Industrial Road to allow for westbound left turn access from Circle Star Way onto Industrial Road. In Upstart's San Carlos office, there are 185 full-time employees working in the office each day. In a recent survey we sent to our employees, showed that about 67% of the respondents said they need to turn left out of the San Carlos parking lot in order to head west on Industrial Road when leaving work each day. Additionally, a lot of Upstart employees also commute via bicycle, and they have expressed that the addition of a left turn westbound lane would improve bicycle safety, as cyclists have encountered drivers confused about not being able to turn left, or drivers who fail to yield to cyclists, given there isn't a protected left turn lane for them. So we would love to request that the San Carlos Planning Commission recommend this ordinance, such in response to the comments for the community, to be adopted, to allow for the intersection and traffic light to be updated, to accommodate left turns from the Circle Star Way onto Industrial Road. We feel that this change would both improve the flow of traffic that exits Circle Star Way, merging onto Industrial Road, and improve the safety of drivers, cyclists, and pedestrians in the area. We are conscious of the neighborhood's concerns for traffic, and we hope that the update to the intersection, of which will continue to block traffic leaving Circle Star Way, from cutting through the neighborhood. And we hope that'll continue to maintain the neighborhood's privacy as well. I've worked at Two Circle Star Way since October of 2015, and since moving into the office then, I have personally witnessed many drivers making a lot of unsafe turns, a lot of unquestionable driving decisions have been made when people are leaving Two Circle Star Way. That also includes everything from individuals using a one-way entrance as an exit, unsafe U-turns on Industrial after exiting, and just turning into other business lots as well. And we've also seen drivers exiting the main entrance at the stoplight through the entrance lane, which forces drivers entering back out of the driveway and into Industrial. So just based on that, and we do believe that the proposal will improve safety and also just the traffic flow in general, while maintaining the privacy of the local neighborhoods. We want to make sure that we are good neighbors for all of the residents who have been there for all this time. And thank you for the opportunity to speak.
You're welcome. Thank you. All right, this is a public hearing, so I need a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Crystal, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Councilmember Overt?
Yes.
Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
And Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
All right. Discussion, motions.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution 2019 dash?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, a resolution of the City Council of the city of San Carlos adopting a mitigated negative declaration and associated mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the Industrial Road traffic signal modification project. Do I read the second one, too?
No, we're doing them one at a time.
All right.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. I just want to make a brief observation to staff, which is, I do think both speakers made some really good points. The traffic flow is very complex, and people are undoubtedly doing things that are unsafe now, and complicating things and whatnot. But the issue of potentially increasing cut-through traffic during it, through a neighborhood, I hope Redwood City staff is aware of that, and they will monitor it and do what is necessary and appropriate to deal with that. Good, thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, thank you. Just to echo, I'm assuming that we're coordinating with Redwood City on this. My experience on Industrial Road that time of night is that it's pretty complicated navigating, and it, the street goes narrow and then it goes wide, and we have a host of issues, for example, with the 24 Fitness and wineries and all that kind of stuff. So I just have a sense that there's more to come on this, but the first question is, are we coordinating with Redwood City, and will we make sure that it's, you know, we don't get that backup or whatnot, the gridlock that was expressed as a concern?
I can answer that. We were very much so coordinated with Redwood City in every step of the way. As soon as the applicant came in, you know, staff gave him direction that we had no opinion on this project, and we couldn't give an opinion until after the community meetings, because we didn't, we were concerned about that neighborhood and the comments that were made 22 years ago, I clearly remember them. And so we had every step of the way Redwood City involved. We had meetings with them, with the developer, very early on. They saw the traffic studies in a draft version, were able to ask questions of the traffic study, made revisions to the traffic study resulting from their comments. I let them review the mitigated negative declaration in draft form before it was released to make sure we had their comments. They attended both of the community meetings, and we've kept them apprised as we've moved along. So, yes, thank you.
Any further comment or discussion? Seeing none, Crystal, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Overt?
Yes.
And Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
All right, we have the second part to this item, or the third part technically. Is there a motion regarding it?
Mr. Chair, I move to introduce ordinance number?
Fifteen forty-six.
Fifteen forty-six?
Yes.
An ordinance of the City Council of the city of San Carlos amending ordinance 1230 for the planned development, PD zoning district, and approving modification to the development standards contained within the plan of development for the Circle Star Development located at 1 and 2 Circle Star Way and 1709 Industrial Road, APNS 046240180, 046240150, and 052103170.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion or comment? Hearing none. Crystal, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Overt?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
And Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes. We will move on to item 10A. Actually, Steve, while you're coming up, or, no, both, well, as you're both coming up. It occurs to me that we have two items that may require some discussion. Jeff, my sense is we're probably not going to be done by 10:30.
I think that depends on the five of you at this point more than it's going to depend on us. I think the presentation's pretty short here, and the council always has the ability to simply waive the presentation if you're satisfied with the written material, and just want to jump right into questions and comments before considering a motion. That'd be fine, too. This is a public hearing, though, so you'll have to open and close their, close the public hearing, Ron.
Okay. What's the dais's pleasure? Do we want the presentation? We want to?
I mean, I read through, I had one question, so I'm fine with just going to questions if people are okay with that, or I'm happy to hear the presentation if others want to hear it.
I don't need to hear it, but if you have a question, I'm fine.
Well, we will definitely handle questions, even if we don't do the presentation. I'm not trying, I'm just trying to manage our time, it's just another way of managing time. So what's the feeling on this side of the dais?
I think since we're looking at increasing user fees, just a quick overview might be helpful from staff to so, to frame it, but I don't think we have to go into great detail.
Fair enough. If staff would take us through?
Good evening, Chair and Council, Rebecca Mandenhall, Administrative Services Director. I'm going to be pretty brief on this. Every year, when we do the, when we start our budget process, we review the cost of providing services. So this proposed fee schedule in front of you was derived from a comprehensive fee study performed in the spring of 2017 by NBS Municipal Advisors. The study included a full analysis of the total cost of providing services, including all applicable direct, indirect, and overhead costs. Since a comprehensive study takes about six to nine months to complete, it's typically only done every three to five years. So following the completion of that study, council approved the use of CPI as a guideline for future cost increases until the next study be performed. The council also formally adopted a resolution to increase impact fees based on certain indexes described in the municipal code. And last year, the city council granted the city manager the authority to waive certain fees for nonprofit agencies, which has typically been our A-frames. So in accordance with prior direction, it's recommended that all the city fees for services increase 3.3% for CPI, except for the following park and rec fees. The per-player field use fees, this was raised last year and is not being recommended to be raised this year. The park and rec registration fee and refund fee is also not recommended to be increased. And the picnic site and bocce court rental fees are not recommended to be increased as these are at market rate. Finally, the janitorial fee is recommended to be increased to cover the pass-through costs of the janitorial service. There are two impact fees that are recommended to be adjusted, and this is in accordance with the municipal code, so the park facility development fee will be increased by the percentage increase of park construction costs cited in the Engineering News Record for the San Francisco Bay Area. Comparing this March to last March, the increase is 0.3%. The sewer capacity charge will be adjusted annually based on the Engineering News Record Construction Cost Index from the March 2016 index, so this increase would be 2.1% this year. And also tonight, the city council is considering the establishment of a new cost of services fee for industrial and commercial inspections to comply with our municipal regional stormwater permit. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Stephen, he'll talk really briefly about the new permit.
Good evening, Chair and City Councilmember, Stephen Machida, Director of Public Works. So real quickly, the C4 inspection fees is a new fee that we're requesting council enact. Basically, this is a four fee that, you know, to do some inspection of the commercial and industrial businesses within our community. So basically, the city is part of the NPDS permit, which is the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System. And also included in that permit is the MRP, or Municipal Regional Permit for Stormwater. So basically, this provision actually covers anything that has to do with stormwater going into the bay. Earlier today, this evening, you heard actually from Ms. Chung in regards to the cleanup of the plastics and flows to the bay, and this is something probably very similar to, you know, what she was announced. But basically, C4 is really for the requirement of, that we're required to do inspection of all businesses, commercial and industrial businesses within our community that may actually flows to the bay, if you will. So in January of last year, basically, up until that point, Santa Clara, excuse me, San Mateo County was actually performing this service at no charge to the businesses. But subsequently last year, we also had heard that that was the last time they were going to perform it, and so they actually provide this, or changes the requirements over to all agencies with San Mateo County. So basically, all the cities actually were scrambling to actually, to determine how do we actually enforce or actually apply this requirement? Because basically, this is a state mandated requirement that we have to do, and we have to do an annual report. And so basically, what we had done is actually hired a consultant to actually help that, help us out and actually do those inspections last, the end of last year and currently this year. So at this point, we decided to determine, okay, because it is an unfunded thing that we're, as a service that we're going through, we were trying to determine if there's a way that we could actually cover our costs. So we actually determined that, we looked at, or spoke to the Silicon Valley Clean Water, who actually is doing a kind of a separate inspection, they call it fat soil and grease or fog. Basically, it's completely for a different type of analysis that they have to do. However, they still visit many of our businesses, commercial, industrial businesses. And so since they would be visiting many of our businesses, we thought this would be a good opportunity to actually have them actually perform this stormwater review on these same businesses. And so we asked them to give us a proposal, which they have come back, and I know the city council had adopted or approved the contract with Silicon Valley Clean Water for a little over $88,000 per year. In any event, so we actually hired NBS to do an analysis of what the fees would be that we would charge for our businesses. Just as, real quick, the fat soil and grease, you know, typically, they look at restaurant business, anything that has to do with any type of grease that's generated that could go into sanitary sewer. The stormwater inspection is basically anything outside of the business. So basically, if there's any wash, washing of floor mats, it could be wash water, it could be cleaning of grates, but anything that could actually flow into the storm drain, you know, we need to know about it, basically, so there's no pollutants going into the stormwater and now into the bay. and now into the bay. So, we hired NBS. Getting back to story, we hired NBS, and they actually determined actually the cost for service of what we could recover, and they came up with a number of about $212 per hour. We were assuming approximately about an hour and a half of service, so an hour for inspection and about half hour for administrative purposes, that we would charge any and all businesses that required this inspection. Prior to the county turning over the roster of the businesses they had evaluated, we, internal staff, actually were able to call out approximately 200 businesses that basically really didn't fall into the category where would require a stormwater inspection. Basically, these were like accounting, you know, financial accounting, attorneys, or things that could be like home business that really didn't have a business. So, we ended up with about 700 parcels that, or businesses that needed inspection. And so, via NBS, they actually prepared a study or analysis to make a determination, and they came up with a number of $212 per hour for this inspection. And it'd be essentially, it would be based on an hour and a half inspection services. So, with that, that kind of concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Excuse me, questions for staff?
I have just one question. So, I'd look, and just, can you, Stephen, just explain sort of the difference, because when we approved earlier, we approved the contract for $88,000, and then in the report, it says that the fees would generate $155,000 or $150,000 in revenue. So, can you just tell me what the difference is? Are there other costs associated with it? I just want to understand the...
There are other costs associated. So, the 212, just to be real clear, the 212 actually doesn't recover our full cost. Basically, there are some other components that we actually cannot cover. Basically, it's like outreach. We're part of the provisions of C4. It does require us to actually do some public outreach and other information within the community. Well, we can't just put that on the commercial and industrial businesses. So, basically, the 212 is kind of based on what we anticipate doing about 12, or excuse me, 200 business per year at one and a half hours times 212, and I think we'll collect about $63,000 just based on that. So, we know we're not covering that $88,000, a little over $89,000 contract that council previously approved earlier this. So, there is a certain amount of subsidy going forward.
So, then I guess I'm confused, because I saw in the report, it says it generates $150,000 or $155,000 worth of revenue. And so, that's, are we just collecting it annually from everyone? Where is that? I just, I don't understand.
$155,000 is for all fees, so it's increasing all the other fees as well? So, the CPI index...
So, it's not just the stormwater fee that's all lumped in as all our fees come in on that?
All the fees.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Because I had one quick one. Actually, it may not be so quick. As I recall, the last time we, the former council approved this, there were certain items that we elected to, I recall them as subsidized. We did not charge out 100% of what the analysis showed we could. Can you sort of summarize for our recent, recent new council members what the major ones of those were?
A number of those were in the Community Development Department as it relates to planning. I don't know specifically which fees those were, but the subsidy, whether it was set at 50% of total cost recovery or 75% of total cost recovery, that set the base fee, and then over the past two years, we've been increasing it by CPI. So, the subsidy is still there. We didn't change the guidance or the direction about how we set that fee.
So, I just want to make sure my colleagues are aware that that kind of decision was made, can be made. It might be worth, just as a note for staff, the next time this comes back, maybe we ought to flag the ones that are subsidized, and if we indicate roughly what they're subsidized by, that would be helpful, just because that, that's sort of a separate decision from whether you choose to increase the fees or not, as whether you choose to subsidize certain things. All right. Seeing no other questions, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
A move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Seeing none. Crystal, if you would call the roll, please.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
And Councilmember Obert?
Yes. And I realize I neglected to see if anybody wanted to comment or address the councils. Anybody want to address the council on the matter? Guess not. Okay.
After we made our decision.
No, we haven't decided yet. We just closed the public hearing. We could always reopen it. So, that's the vice mayor was supposed to catch that mistake of mine.
You're doing such a good job, I tell you.
I'll believe that. All right. Is there a motion or discussion people would like to have regarding the actual action item?
I move to adopt Resolution 2019...
26.
Resolution of the City Council of San Carlos, of the City of San Carlos adopting, authorizing adjustments to the cost of services schedule, user fees, park facility development and sewer capacity charge impact fees for fiscal year 2019-20, and establishing a cost of service fee for industrial and commercial inspections for compliance with provision C.4 of the Municipal Regional Stormwater Permit.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion or comment? If not, Crystal, please call the roll.
Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
And Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Thank you very much. And by the way, Stephen, that was a very clever idea about getting Silicon Valley Clean Water to help with the inspections. All right, we'll move on to item 11A. We still have what the letter from the consent calendar to deal with after this. Consideration of recommending city selection committee appointments for a seat on the Local Agency Formation Commission, LAFCO, and a seat on the Housing and Endowment and Regional Trust Heart Board. Jeff?
Good evening, Mr. Chair. This item was placed on the council agenda tonight at the request of the council itself for discussion. There's no staff report to go along with it. You'd be providing direction and recommendations to the chair, I believe. He would be taking part in the selection process of the outside body.
Yes, that's correct, although I think in this case, it's this Friday, and I will be out of town, so we've filed a proxy for Ron to act and act on my behalf.
Can I move to extend the meeting till 10:40?
I was hoping to be done, no, sure. That's fine. No, no, fine. Is there a second?
Second.
We'll just do this verbally as everybody, oh, aye? Any objections extending to 10:40? Good. Thank you. So, actually, I guess we have a very easy vote this time, because there's only one candidate for each position, correct? From what I saw?
Yes, I do want to point out that they are accepting floor nominations, so someone can...
Correct. I mean, we don't actually have to... Well, I don't know about the rest of you, but I certainly support supporting our own Sarah McDowell for the Heart Board, so unless she's changed her mind.
No, it's something I definitely would like to do. I appreciate your support.
Are there, I'm just trying to see how we can use the motion as written, which contemplates both positions being named. Obviously, we can revise that, but does anybody want to take a position regarding the other position?
Well, I don't know who has applied for the, for LAFCO.
Oh.
Do we know?
It was...
Harvey's listed.
Yes, from Half Moon Bay, correct?
Harvey Riddick?
No, not Riddick. Riddick's the other, it's Debbie Riddick.
Oh, Debbie, Pennock or something. What's it?
It says right here, Harvey Rarback on the letter.
Oh, sorry, I didn't look at the letter. I'm sorry, I didn't see the letter.
Is there support for Harvey?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I will, if there's no further discussion, I will certainly entertain a motion.
Go ahead.
I don't remember how, I think Laura should do the first one, because she knows his names.
Why don't you do the motion?
There it is, Harvey.
It's right here.
It's done one day.
Right here.
It's right there.
I believe it's pronounced McDowell.
I move to recommend Harvey Rarback, City of Half Moon Bay, the mayor, for a seat on the Local Agency Formation Commission, LAFCO, and Sarah McDowell for a seat on the Housing, Endowment, and Regional Trust Heart Board.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, Crystal, anybody from the public wish to comment on this item? Seeing none. Crystal, if you'd call the roll, please.
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
And Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you, I will so vote.
That's right, we have no control over what he actually does.
Chicken dinner comes with that.
I'm sorry, I'm missing the chicken dinner. Okay, so, the item, the last item we have before the wrap-up motions or wrap-up items is from the consent calendar. It's the letter. I don't need a presentation done on the letter itself. I read it. I was the one who asked to pull it from the consent calendar. Frankly, if, my preference would be that we ask staff to modify the letter in the following way, which is, in general, I don't have a problem with it, but I felt that it did not recognize enough of the shared local responsibility for seeing more housing being built. It's absolutely true that we don't generally build housing, but we are the ones that set the rules that set the incentives and disincentives for housing to be built, and that was one item. The other item is the notion of, directionally, I would be okay with SB 50 if it stopped telling us exactly where to build the housing. I'm fine if California wants to hold our feet to the fire and say, "You must build more housing," and maybe even, "You must build a lot more housing than you were expecting." You must see that it's built. I just would like to preserve some, preserve the local control over where we build it, and that's sort of the steamroller side of SB 50 that I'm not comfortable with. So, it was those two items, particularly the first one, that caused me to not be supportive of the letter. I don't know if anybody else feels the same way. If not, we can quickly put this to a vote and get past it.
If I could interject just really quick, I also want to point out for the diocese and the community that there was a typo, for lack of a better word, in the letter that was in your packet, in that it should not be for my signature, but rather the chair of the council's signature, and that we provided you a new draft this evening with that correction.
I thought you'd just gotten yourself a promotion or something, except, I got to tell you, it doesn't come with very much pay.
I think it's a pay cut.
Anyway, that's the reason I pulled it from the consent calendar, and, you know, we can discuss it further, but that's my...
I mean, I was comfortable with the letter. I guess, Chair Obert, I'd just be concerned sort of what, if you had suggestions about what you'd want included more specifically in that, because to me, the bill doesn't, trying to get them to talk about incentives and push for housing, I understand that, but I don't, the author's not interested in going in that direction, it seems like to me. So, I don't know that us taking that approach is sort of going to benefit us in the letter.
I understand, and in fact, I thought about sort of submitting some proposed changes to language. The problem is that while the points are that concern me are relatively simple, they kind of thread through a lot of the tone of the letter, and I would end up rewriting the whole thing, which to me, didn't make sense. If the council shares my concerns or some other version of concerns, we'd be better to direct staff to rewrite it and bring it back. To your point about the direction that Senator Weiner is trying to go in, I don't necessarily know exactly what he's trying to do. I know what he says he's looking to do, and to me, our goal is to provide feedback on how we see this playing out. And I guess, I get concerned when I see many councils up and down the peninsula reacting strongly to the idea of, well, we don't want to be told what to do, and we're meeting all the housing numbers that you've given us, and, you know, that ought to be it. And I'm kind of like, somehow that feels like an abdication of responsibility for me. I'm not blaming us for what didn't happen, but I would prefer to send a signal of saying that, yeah, we do have a problem. We all recognize there's a problem. That's why we had three hours' worth of discussions about housing over the last two meetings, and we realize that we have a role to play in that, and we accept that. We just would like you to stop, we don't, we would like you to require us to do our job, but not tell us how to do it.
No, I get that, and I guess maybe a sentence that would sort of indicate that not only are we building, you know, we're sort of going to meet our arena numbers, overall numbers, but maybe talking about, we're looking at making it easier to build housing and trying to build more housing in San Carlos as part of this, that I could see adding a sentence around that to sort of strengthen that, that we're not just, you know, meeting our numbers, we're looking to go over and do more. But I don't know, to your point, I would want to just maybe think about one sentence in there to do that.
That would, that was certainly, that isn't quite what I was thinking, but that would certainly be, in my opinion, better than what the draft currently is. So, but, you know, again, I'm not trying to occupy the entire discussion here, so if the four of you are okay with the letter the way it is, then let's just move on and vote on it. I don't mind signing letters that I don't agree with, because I sign the letters based on direction of the council.
For the record, I think the letter says what it needs to say.
All right. Is there a motion to authorize the chair to sign the letter on behalf of the council?
I make a motion to have the chair sign the letter.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? I don't think there's anybody who wants to comment on it publicly. Any other comments? If not, Crystal, please call the roll.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
No.
Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
And Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
All right, the motion passes. So, we are on to reflections and agenda setting. Anybody have some that they'd like to add or offer or suggest for future meetings?
Did you want to talk about the one, the item we talked about?
I was waiting for you to talk about it.
I think...
It was your idea, so...
I had sent a note to Chair Obert and Jeff just about proclamations and how we go through that process, because there's a couple businesses that are closing up that have been, or either people retiring or the businesses are closing, that have been here for, you know, 25, 30 years, and, you know, recognizing them and wanting to sort of do something to recognize their impact on the community, and I just wanted to, you know, talking to the chair, he's got some ideas about things, and so, about what, how we, what criteria we might put in place, so I wanted to...
Let me, that's a good foundation. Let me just sort of add to it. Historically, the council has delegated to the chair or mayor whether or not to issue proclamations, and as you might imagine, different chairs and mayors have different standards that they use for that. As a separate thing, some years ago, Omar Ahmed, when he was mayor, created the notion of the city coin, and the protocol regarding the city coin, just as a reminder to everybody, is any council member on their own, based on their own decision, their own choice, can give a city coin to somebody or some organization in recognition of some service to the community. So, that does not come through the diocese, it doesn't get voted on or anything like that. As you know, I've sort of been on the kick of trying to recognize that the chair is really the chair and ought not to have delegated authorities that he or she doesn't need to have to run meetings and to run the council, or to have the council affect its business. The proclamations create a bit of a complicating factor, because you might imagine, if we just opened it up and said, "Well, we'll have the council vote on proclamations, and whatever gets approved, the mayor or chair will issue," that would work, except for the fact that I don't think any of us would want to vote against somebody, right? I mean, even if you, it's one of those questions that it's like, well, you put somebody in a very awkward position if they don't think it's the right thing to do. So, general topic would be, should we agendize a discussion of how the council and... So general topic would be, should we agendize a discussion of how the council and individual council member recognizes individual members, businesses in the community? Or should we just not do that and just leave the existing stuff we have, where there's proclamations that are done by the mayor and coins that can be handed out by anybody?
If I may add, because the current procedure for a proclamation is that both the chair or mayor of the council and the city manager have to be in agreement...
Sorry, I forgot about that part.
On whether a proclamation is issued. But, and, you know, really, I just tend to be, you know, a real sort of high-level, does it make sense kind of look. Different chairs or mayors have looked differently at it. But typically, the defining criteria usually came with, was the group or individual asking for the proclamation really significantly tied to San Carlos? Or was it an outside group that was just collecting proclamations from across the country on an issue that really didn't have anything to do with San Carlos? In terms of the city coins, the process has always been that any city council member can request coins. We keep them upstairs in our office, and you can hand them out for any reason, and that's individual judgment of the council member, so.
So in terms of agenda setting, the question is, do we want to have a discussion about that? Or do we just, are we okay with the existing protocols as have been outlined to just let it go the way it is? So...
I say, keep it the way it is.
And I'm okay with that, too. I, yeah, that's fine. I think, and it's helpful to me to understand the coin process, too, because now that I understand where to go get one, that makes it easier.
Yes, that's fair.
Do you want me to give you one, Adam?
Not yet.
I was thinking of giving you one for successfully doing that motion. So any other items, reflections, or agenda setting, agenda setting nation, nature at this point? Okay, staff comments on city administrative business.
Yeah, I just wanted to remind the council and the community that we're having our eighth annual San Carlos Volunteer Expo on Saturday, May 11th, from 9:30 to 12:30 at the San Carlos Adult Community Center on Chestnut Street. And that's 9:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m.
Very good. With that, we will adjourn the meeting early.